Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's City of Citrus Heights City Council meeting for Wednesday, April 9th. You will notice that I am doing, I am conducting the meeting this evening and we are waiting for our mayor who's attending a community event and she'll be here a little bit later. So that's the reason for her slight delay and hopefully we'll have a good time together until then. Let's go ahead and start with our flag salute. Please join me. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Middleton?
Present.
Councilmember Nelson?
Present.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez Taft?
Here.
And Mayor Karpinski Costa is absent.
All right, if we can have our video statement, please.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is live and recorded with closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable, Channel 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse Cable Systems. It is also livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, April 14th at 9:00 a.m. on Metro Cable, Channel 14, and this meeting can also be viewed on the city's YouTube channel.
All right, next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
Do I have a motion for approval?
Move approval.
All right. Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Middleton, second by Councilmember Nelson. Do we need a vote on that, Amy?
Yes, you can just do an audible vote versus a roll call vote.
All right. Approve? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have an agenda. Next item, please.
Next item is presentation number four, Proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights, proclaiming April 13th through 19th, 2025 as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
All right, I have passed this proclamation duty to Councilmember Schaefer.
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd like to call to the podium representatives from the Citrus Heights Police Department to accept this proclamation. The proclamation for the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming April 13th to 19th, 2025 as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Whereas emergencies can occur any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services in the City of Citrus Heights, and when emergencies occur, the prompt response of our law enforcement, fire, emergency medical personnel is critical to the protection of life and the preservation of property, and the safety of our first responders is dependent on the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who contact the Citrus Heights Police Department Communication Center and our 911 dispatchers are the first contact our citizens have for emergency services. And our public safety telecommunications of Citrus Heights Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehensions of criminals, suppression of fire, and public education. Each dispatcher is exhibit, has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights declares this week, declares the week of April 13th through April 19th to be Public, National Public Safety Telecommunications Root Week in Citrus Heights in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Schaefer. Chief, would you like to introduce us to your team?
Actually, I'll give the honors to our supervisor here.
Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, Vice Mayor Mary Jane Lopez Taft, members of City Council, City Manager Ash Feeney, Chief Turcot. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to present this proclamation tonight. My name's Sarah Frederick and I'm one of the communication supervisors for the Citrus Heights Police Department. National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week falls on April 13th through the 19th this year. It was started in 1981 by Patricia Anderson with the Contra Costa Sheriff's Department in California. In 1994, former President Bill Clinton signed Presidential Proclamation 6667, in which he calls public safety telecommunicators "the unseen first responders that Americans place their trust in every day." Often called the first first responders, these words still ring true today. During 2024, the Citrus Heights Communication Center handled almost 120,000 calls for service with 333,836 of them being 911 calls. Through dedication, a little sacrifice, and a lot of love for what we do, our dispatchers work diligently to connect the community with resources, provide safety to both the callers and the officers, and be the voice of reason during chaotic situations. Thank you so much to our City Council and the community for recognizing the Citrus Heights Police Department Communications Team through this proclamation. We would also like to share that Chief Turcot will be presenting Dispatcher Kayla Sanders with our CHPD 2025 Dispatcher of the Year Award. We're really proud of her hard work and her growth over her career, so, thank you.
And, Madam Vice Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to present this Dispatcher of the Year Award. Just a little bit about this award. Every year, peers within the department nominate certain folks for Dispatcher of the Year. That's decided on, and this year, Kayla has been our nominee and our awardee. She has a conflict for the dispatch banquet where they usually give this award out, and so we thought, what a neat treat for during this proclamation to also have council be able to acknowledge the award as well. So with that, Kayla, due to your exceptional service over this last year and your dedication to the community, we present you with the Dispatcher of the Year Award.
Thank you, Chief.
Kayla, would you like to say a few words?
I owe all to my team. They trained me and I owe it all to my team. They trained me, they never gave up, and I wouldn't be able to do what I do without them.
Wonderful.
And thank you for my family for being here. It was quite the surprise.
And before we go and take pictures with each other, do my councilmembers want to mention any thoughts?
You go first.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I appreciate everything you all do. The way that you can remain calm and professional and do your job while you help save lives is just incredible, so thank you for everything.
Yeah, I was actually going to say the same thing. I got to tell you, sir, I've been in a few emergency situations and it's very tough to stay calm and stay focused on making sure you have the resources where they belong. So sincere appreciation for the hard work you guys put in.
Forgive me, guys, I'm under the weather, but thank you so much because you see folks and you hear folks at their worst, right? And you remain calm, you make sure the resources go where they're supposed to go, and that is something that is often overlooked because whenever we pick up that phone and call, we fully expect that the police are going to show up, never actually connecting that step, whereas actually you are the first line. So thank you for being there and for protecting our community.
And I just echo the sentiments of my colleagues here. I thank you so much for your service, how you serve people directly. You know, sometimes it may feel like you're, you don't get to know the rest of the story and you have to pick up the phone and pick up the phone, but I know that you are part of their story when they get to wherever they get to get the physical help. You are the help in the meantime, and so I just appreciate all of your work and just the inner fortitude it must take to sit in that chair and handle that crisis in that moment. So thank you all. And if we can join them for a picture.
Bring it up here.
And family members, feel welcome to come up and take pictures as well, so.
Did you, Chief, did you want the family to join now or you wanted to?
Get in the middle.
How are we doing? We in the picture?
I'm going to grab this.
Sorry, go ahead.
One, two, three.
What's your emergency?
Next item is presentation number five, a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights, proclaiming April 13th through 19th, 2025 as National Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week.
Okay, I have given the pleasure of reading this proclamation to Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, thank you for coming forward. So this is the proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming April 13th through 19th, 2025 as National Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week. Whereas the National Animal Care and Control Association has designated their second week of April each year as Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week, and whereas animal service officers play a vital role in our community, including enforcing animal control laws, protecting public health by preventing the spread of diseases such as rabies, and educating residents on proper pet care. And whereas the Animal Services Unit is comprised of dedicated, highly qualified administrative operations and leadership professionals committed to preventing animal abuse and neglect, ensuring public safety by managing dangerous animals, rescuing injured animals, and reuniting lost animals with their owners. And whereas the Animal Services Unit is highly responsive to the needs of our community, actively participating in outreach and educational events that promote the importance of pet licensing and spaying and neutering to reduce overpopulation and shelter intake. And whereas the Animal Services Unit serves a visible and essential role in the community, regularly engaging with residents and the criminal justice system to enforce animal care laws at the local, state, and federal levels. And whereas the City of Citrus Heights honors and recognizes the compassionate service and dedication of our, pardon, our entire Animal Services Unit for their unwavering commitment to ensuring the welfare of animals and the safety of the public. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim the second week of April as National Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week, and urges all residents of Citrus Heights to recognize and express their appreciation for the dedication and service of the Citrus Heights Animal Services Unit.
Well, good evening, Madam Vice Mayor and councilmembers, City Manager Feeney, Chris Frye, Special Services Division Commander with the Police Department. It is with immense gratitude and pride that I stand before you this evening to accept this proclamation on behalf of our dedicated Animal Services Unit in recognition of next week's National Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week. Next week not only highlights the vital role that animal care and control professionals play in our society, but also serves as a reminder of the compassion, resilience, and dedication that these individuals bring to their work every single day. I would like to take this opportunity to spotlight five dedicated members of our team. Police Services Manager Tiffany Campbell, Supervisor Deborah Miller, Animal Services Officer Tony Fleener, who was not able to be with us tonight, Animal Services Officer Alexis Wager, and Program Assistant Lori Ridenhour. These remarkable individuals have gone above and beyond to ensure that our community's pets receive the care and attention that they need. Their commitment is unparalleled and they work tirelessly to protect, rescue, and nurture animals in distress while fostering a compassionate relationship between our community and their beloved pets. PSM Campbell, Supervisor Miller, Officer Fleener, Officer Wager, and Program Assistant Ridenhour demonstrate not only skill and professionalism, but also a deep empathy for their animals and the people they serve. Whether they are responding to emergency calls, conducting investigations, or engaging in community outreach and education, they do so with unwavering dedication and a genuine love for the animals that come into their care. It is this compassion that sets them and our entire Animal Services Unit apart. In a world where kindness and empathy often take a backseat, let us remember that each day, these experienced professionals endeavor to make a difference in the lives of animals and the families that cherish them. They are the unsung heroes working quietly behind the scenes and we owe them our deepest gratitude. As we celebrate National Animal Control, Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week next week, I urge everyone to take a moment to acknowledge and appreciate the work being done by animal services professionals, not just in our city, but across the nation. Their commitment, hard work, and compassion create a ripple effect of goodwill and kindness that benefits our entire community. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor and members of council for this recognition. It is an honor to accept this proclamation on behalf of our Animal Services Unit, and I look forward to continuing our vital mission together in the service of our furry friends and the loving community that supports them.
Thank you so much, Commander Frye. Do we have any council comments?
Thank you and your team for all that you guys do. Reuniting pets with their families is a super important role in our community here. You know, our pets are our babies, sort of, you know, our kids in a way, and they're important to our families, so thank you for all that you do.
I'd just like to echo those comments. I think that the level of professionalism I hear from the community, from you guys, is great, and I keep up with good work.
Thank you for taking the extra time and effort to make sure that you're reuniting these pets to their owners. It's really critical and important. I've had my neighbor who's lost their dog several times over the years since I've been in Citrus Heights, over a decade now, and they're always like, oh, they're so nice when they return my dog, and I'm like, dude, get your dog chipped.
Yes, I do, and also echo the sentiments of my colleagues here, but also want to thank your team for working with our community groups that also care about our furry friends here that wander our community and get lost and have to be found and worked with. So thank you for also doing that, and if you don't mind, we'll take a picture with your proclamation. Thank you.
Next time we have a pet.
Forgot.
That's when I called the kitten.
Yeah.
There she is.
When did you put my spot?
Your spot's in your spot.
Change it all.
Is it ready yet?
Ready?
Oh, yeah.
Hi, guys.
Public comment.
Good time.
Can you read the next items?
The next item is public comment, and if you wish to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Speakers are limited to five minutes each, and the mayor has the discretion to adjust the allotted time. There is a countdown display that will flash red at the end of the allotted time. Consistent with the Brown Act, the council is prohibited from engaging in a discussion or taking action on any item not appearing on the agenda. And I do not have any speaker sheets for this item. We do have one for item 10, but I do have a written public comment that I can read. Why don't you read the written one? So we have a written comment from Sheri McCormick, and the, actually, this is for item number 10, too, actually, now that I'm looking at it, so I'm going to hold this one for item number 10. David, do you want to wait till item 10?
Okay.
Okay. Then we'll have the next item, please.
The next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
Let's start with Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, really slow week, couple weeks. March 27th, we had our air quality board meeting, and we discussed raising the per diem rate and also the teleconference rates. The big item of discussion was assessing the California Clean Air Act and if the federal guidelines are going to actually supersede what's going on in California, and basically the board said, let's just wait and see, which is probably the best thing to do. And that's my report.
Okay. Councilmember Kelsey.
Thank you, Mayor. Since we've last been here, let's see, I had an STA board meeting the next day after our last meeting. There we received a presentation from CARTA, the Tolling Authority, and that is ahead of the installation of toll lanes in Yolo County heading out toward San Francisco. And, let's see, then the next day, I attended a ribbon cutting for Mathnasium. It is a tutoring center for math, which is awesome to have in our community. Then on the 17th of March, I attended Supervisor Rodriguez's community meeting here in this room, and we all heard her thoughts on everything going on now. March 21st, I attended my first two-by-two meeting with the mayor and our city manager, along with resident board members and the executive director of the SRPD, the Sunrise Recreation and Park District. And then, of course, we had our strategic planning retreat on the 26th, which we'll talk more about. And then we went to Colorado to study the malls there, which we'll talk more about, too.
Good. Thank you very much. Councilmember Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. So let's go back to, so, let's see here, did, I was also at Supervisor Rodriguez's presentation, it was very good, and then I had a SACOG meeting on the 20th that was in Rockland, and that was a very interesting tour of Rockland. They learned a lot about that little city. I didn't realize that the railroad was actually started being based in Rockland, and then they, the railroad realized that they needed a longer run to get up the hill, so they actually moved it back to Roseville. So a very interesting tour, that was with SACOG, one of the remote meetings. And then on, I actually had to miss that, I missed the meeting on the, for SACRT on the 24th because I was attending an event up in Eldorado County, and then I had, okay, so then we had, I had a chamber ribbon cutting on the 27th, did the strategic planning, chamber ribbon cutting for Minuteman Press there, that was great. And then on the 28th, I had a mega region, which is also part of SACOG, it's a committee meeting where we get together with the San Joaquin and a lot of the Bay Area folks to talk about things we have in common as far as mega region goes. Then on the 20, sorry, the 31st, I sat in for the mayor, for Monday morning with the mayor, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. because she had another appointment. And then I had a meeting with Newmark, which is a marketing firm interested in bringing companies to the Sacramento region. They're doing a marketing study, and then we did our trip to our study mission to Belmar, which we'll talk about a little bit more later. And then on Monday, I had a SACOG meeting with a Policy Innovation Committee meeting. It was also very interesting. We talked about tolling, we talked about loaning money, we talked about all kinds of things, it was interesting. And then going, then we're right up tonight, so that's, that was my entire couple weeks there.
We've been busy, all of us.
Yes.
Vice Mayor, how you been? What you doing?
Doing well, had pretty quiet last few weeks, but our Sacramento Public Library is entering into their budget planning season, and so you will get a little bit more information about that from me. I am on the Budget Subcommittee and will be talking about that in the coming months. Also, as a fan of economic development and business growth in our community, I did go to Teriyaki Madness, which is occupying the former Starbucks next to Barnes &amp; Noble. So I encourage you to shop and eat local and, you know, really support those businesses that pop up here in our community because that is the best way we can encourage other businesses to be part of Citrus Heights.
We're just talking about where to have lunch with the mayors. Maybe that's a good spot. Is that a good spot? Is it quiet?
It's very small.
Oh, okay. Well, our last council meeting, believe it or not, was March 12th, and that was like a century ago. And we all pretty much went on the 13th. I'm looking at my calendar, we all went to the Community Awards putting on by the Chamber, so you all left that one out, and you all went, because I know it was a big event, like, where the Chamber recognizes, our police department, we had like 16 of them up there for, because you can't single out one when they're all so good. So, and Jeannie Brune's got the lifetime award, it's Lifetime Achievement Award, which I was happy to sign her little things, and it was a great event, and so that was very nice. And then on the 14th, I met with Matt Hedges, who is the right-hand man of Supervisor Rodriguez, just to kind of touch bases between the city's needs, county, what's going on, and mostly city's needs. And then went to the marching band, I think it was just me and the city manager were at the, eating spaghetti at the marching band fundraiser on the 15th. And on 17th, I did Monday with the mayor, and I was glad to see David because he brings me breakfast. I also went that same evening to the Supervisor Rodriguez's community meeting. On the 18th, I went to a mosquito meeting, and nothing's happening just yet, we're just filling in, I'm getting our summer help. So by next month, I should have more updates as we start to set our traps out and see. But with this rain that we just had, now is the time, these guys are just growing like crazy, and all those little water containers in your backyard, even upside-down water caps, they can grow in there. So it's just kind of look for water sources, tires, anything stagnant. If the water's moving, it's okay. If the water's sitting still, you know, I keep a pot of water to water my patio plants, and if I don't get out there for three days, there's probably larvae in there. So just kind of, you know, dump that water that's been sitting there for more than three days. And then, as Councilmember Nelson said, we went on the park two-by-two, talked about our community interests between us and the park, partnerships that we establish are really important to our city. On the 24th, I want to thank you for filling in for the hour because that hour is I went to the, I always know what that goes, GSEC, Greater Sacramento Economic Council, with city manager Megan and Casey. Wasn't Casey there? I think Casey was there. No, Casey was for the park board. All right, well, we went, and so that was a nice little briefing, and then I finished up Monday with the mayor, and then I went to my Neighborhood 10 meeting that night. Then we did the strategic plan on the 26th, and I think everybody'd be interested in seeing our new due list. On the 28th, I met with a On the 18th, I went to a mosquito meeting, and nothing's happening just yet. We're just filling in, getting our summer help. So, by next month, I should have more updates as we start to set our traps out and see. But with this rain that we just had, now is the time. These guys are just growing like crazy, and all those little water containers in your backyard, even upside-down water caps, they can grow in there. So, it's just kind of look for water sources, tires, anything stagnant. If the water's moving, it's okay. If the water's sitting still, you know, I keep a pot of water to water my patio plants, and if I don't get out there for three days, there's probably larvae in there. So, just kind of, you know, dump that water that's been sitting there for more than three days. And then, as Councilmember Nelson said, we went on the park two-by-two, talked about our community interests between us and the park. Partnerships that we establish are really important to our city. On the 24th, I want to thank you for filling in for the hour, because that hour is I went to the, I always know what that goes, GSEC, Greater Sacramento Economic Council, with city manager Megan and Casey. Wasn't Casey there? I think Casey was there. No, Casey was for the park board. All right. Well, we went, and so that was a nice little briefing. And then, I finished up Monday with the mayor, and then I went to my Neighborhood 10 meeting that night. Then, we did the strategic plan on the 26th, and I think everybody'd be interested in seeing our new due list. On the 28th, I met with a constituent. I went to, I went to Mariposa School. The mosquito district partners with an outfit that goes and puts on a mosquito presentation for the kids. And so, it was an all-school event with all the classes. I didn't realize how many kids we have in our city. There's a lot of kids in Citrus Heights. This is just one school. And so, it was really cute to watch the kids interact, because it was an interactive presentation about mosquitoes. And then, Councilmember Schaefer and I met with Senator Nilo's office on a pending bill that may affect us. So, we met with that to get some lowdown on that. April 2nd, the night before we went to Colorado, I went to a LAFCO meeting. One item on the agenda. I thought, geez, I'll get home, I'll pack, I'll be ready to go. The one item lasted from 5:30 till 10:00 p.m. Say, poor Jane, I know. Anyway, it was, and then they didn't even vote. I'm the alternate, but I go just to kind of watch, and they didn't even vote on it. They said, let's vote on it next meeting, so I look forward to the next meeting. Then, we went to Belmar, and I came back. I did Monday with the mayor. And then, the reason I was late tonight is we gave some funding to the various schools, our grammar schools, our grade schools, and the middle school, I think. Middle school, possibly. And so, Colleen Colawunder was there tonight, and so my school, that we assigned all the council members to be the contact person, and my school is Grand Oaks. So, they put on a art show and a presentation. They sang the Lion King songs. They had cultural dancers from Citrus Heights called Folk, Cultural, it's a cultural group that's right from our city. You know, there, you pay to have them come. So, they used some of that funding for that and to buy pizza, because normally, they can't, you know, buy the pizza out of their regular budget. So, I took some pictures of some of the art. Some of it's incredible. You know, you see a smidgen of it when they participate in the contest for the Republic Services Calendar or for the mosquito calendar. These kids are, even the kindergarten, they did butterflies. They, they did butterflies, and then they took a picture of themselves with their hands like this and put it on the butterfly so that they were the antennae of the butterfly. I mean, cute. This was like, this is like great. And I couldn't take a picture of it, because you can't take a picture of kids without permission. So, it was like, up here. And then, they did, and what else was there? Oh, Mr. McKibben was there, former, a former board member. It was a wonderful event. That's why I was late. And so, we're very busy. We've been a very busy council.
Madam Mayor, may I make another comment?
Yes.
I realized I made a mistake. I said we would talk more about the strategic planning. It is on the consent calendar. So, I just wanted to say real quickly that it was a really interesting experience, being my first strategic planning retreat. And it was just a really eye-opening experience to see how the council works with the executive staff of the city, and it was just a great day, lots of ideas flowing, and I think we put some really good things together. Thank you.
It is always a good event, and there's never enough time in the day, you know, to get everything that we want to talk about. All right, so that's my report. Everybody's report. What's the next item, please?
The next item is consent calendar, and we have item six, which is approval of the minutes. Item seven, the Arcade Creek Repairs Mel Court Project, a ward of construction project. Item eight, adoption of the annual strategic planning objectives. And that are, is the consent calendar.
Please, your counsel.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Next item.
Next item is regular calendar. Item number nine, the subject is City Council Project Tour of the Denver Metro Area Presentation.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Ash Feeney, your city manager. I just wanted to open up and make a few comments before I hand it over to Directors Kempinar and Director Huber, who are going to make this, the majority of this presentation. But I just want to talk a little bit about the program that was put together by Director Kempinar and his team, and a special shout-out to Stacy Hildebrand that really also had a lot of involvement in making sure that we had a very robust trip that was very full, which no doubt it was. As the council knows, we were very busy while we were out there. And it was not busy work, but it was meaningful, thoughtful, thorough work. Director Kempinar made sure that we had a great lineup of kind of the who's who when it related to the redevelopment of these malls, mall assets, or two different malls that were different stages of redevelopment. And then, in addition to that, also looked at some other really creative projects that were happening in and around that area. We were able to visit the Edgewater Public Market, which was like an adaptive reuse, and it was really a catalyst to help see redevelopment in and around an area around really a market hall. I know that Director Kempinar and Director Huber are going to speak to that in their presentation. And then, with the interest that the city council has in arts, in that we continue to hear from the community, and, I mean, just even in the council comments, we have a lot of burgeoning artists here in Citrus Heights. The local Business Improvement District out of Lakewood went ahead and started a program, this 48 West Arts District, and we were able to visit an art gallery that their Business Improvement District had helped facilitate and start. And then, actually, it was turned over to an art district that now executes that program, and there's a whole art line with public art everywhere. So, we were able to see that, and more importantly, not just see these things, we were able to see how they came together, how they were financed, what were some of the pitfalls that they faced along the way, what were some of the lessons learned? And then, how can we relate the things that we're trying to do here in Citrus Heights relative to Sunrise Mall, Auburn Boulevard, and a focus on the arts? What could we take away that's relevant here for the city? So, I thought it was an excellent study mission, and just hats off to Director Kempinar for putting that together. Really appreciated his hard work on it. And then, speaking of a tip of the hat, Councilmember Schaefer, that's where the idea came from, from where your trip to SACOG, with SACOG out to the Belmar Mall in the Lakewood, Colorado area, really inspired some thinking with you, as well as some of your other SACOG board members. And the reason SACOG chose this area, this metropolitan area, is it's really, looks at probably about 20 years ahead of where Sacramento is right now, but there's a lot of similarities with Denver and Sacramento, just probably 20 years ahead of us. And as it relates to the mall redevelopments that we visited, those started, it's funny to say turn of the century now, but ultimately about 20, 25 years ago. One of them's a little further along than the other, but they were in various stages of development over the past 25 years. And so, if you think about Sacramento 20 years ago, Citrus Heights 20 years ago, there were some very real similarities relative to some of the work that we're trying to execute on here as well. So, that was a little bit of the why behind the trip, and some of the background, and some of the similarities. And with that, I think I'll go ahead and turn it over to Director Kempinar and Director Huber for the balance of the presentation.
Thank you, city manager Feeney and council. A pleasure to kind of give you a recap of the trip, and look forward to hearing your comments as well. So, as city manager pointed out, the first part of this presentation will focus on Belmar, which was in Lakewood, Colorado. Then, we'll talk about a different approach for a mall in downtown Westminster, Colorado, Edgewood Public Market, and then, last but not least, Arts District.
And each of these segments has a pause in between for council comments, reflections, questions. Also happy to take those real time as we're moving through the presentation.
And you can see here, lots of community, our group gathering time, asking questions. The council was obviously hard at work and bundled up, because it was a little chilly while we were there. So, just recapping where we went, so the Denver metro areas, Denver's in the center of this slide. Lakewood, Edgewater, and Westminster are all west of the Denver proper. They're all suburbs, first or second-tier suburbs, similar to what we are to Sacramento. Obviously, Denver's also the state capital for Colorado, so a lot of similarities, as the city manager Feeney mentioned. Also, if you look at the malls that were involved, a lot of similarities, too. This is a photograph of each of the mall sites from 1989. You can see our Sunrise Mall on the left, Westminster Mall in the center, and Villa Italia Mall on the right, which was what became Belmar. So, you can see a lot of similarities, lots of parking, lots of big roads around them, a lot of similarities to layout and building shapes, so there's a lot of commonality between these three different malls. So, first, we'll focus on Belmar. Often, they call it downtown Lakewood as well. It kind of became a downtown as a suburb. Neither Westminster nor Lakewood had a downtown. So, repurposing these malls became the downtown for them, where people could gather and businesses could really thrive. So, just a couple of samplings of what it looks like out there on the ground. We were there in a colder part, so there weren't people out in the plaza on tables enjoying it, because it was snowing. But obviously, you can imagine in the summer and spring months, it's a vibrant place to be. The top right photo, you can see it's got a variety of housing typologies, ranging from apartments to detached or duplexes. And then, in the plaza also, during the wintertime, on the bottom left, they do an ice rink, which is really cool to check out. Just a brief history on Belmar and the Villa Italia Mall. So, that mall opened a little bit before Sunrise in 1965, but very similar size, 104 acres. Sunrise is 100 acres, 1.4 million square feet. Sunrise is 1.1 million square feet. Similarly, that mall, the town built around it. That was the mall that, that was what drove a lot of growth, and it really was their economic engine until 1980s. And it's similar to Sunrise, it served as a community gathering place. That's where people went when they wanted to hang out, or people came to town. That's where they brought them to, because it was something cool to show off. But mall slowly declined and ended up in closing in 2001. The city staff attributed that to a slowing general economy, increased local competition in nearby area, lack of investment, private investment to the site, and then, three of the four anchors had closed by that point. So, it was definitely trending downwards. And that resulted in a general deterioration to their commercial core and their tax base. Both property tax and sales tax continued to increase around the mall, but declined on the mall itself to a point where there wasn't much money coming in and not a lot of upkeep. They also had a complicated ownership pattern, where there's different leases and property ownership that made it difficult to pull in developers to have those conversations and actually talk about redevelopment of the site. And then, even then, in 1989, there was the natural trend of malls starting to stagnate. So, as city manager Feeney said, about 20 years ahead of where we're at, and we're seeing a lot of similar similarities. So, as the city dove into it, they realized they had a problem, and they wanted to attack it. And so, they looked at some of the challenges. One of the biggest challenges is infrastructure. As a mall, it was built for a single purpose, it was retail, and it doesn't have the sewer or water pipes and things like that to serve residential or higher-intensity uses, so that was a major obstacle. They also had some struggles with groundwater and soil contamination from previous uses on the site, so that required remediation of certain uses and asbestos inside the interior of the mall. As that got hauled off, they had to treat it properly. So, the city really identified an approach would be, the best approach for them would be a public-private partnership. And as luck would have it, there was a developer in the Denver region who was a newer developer, but they had a different view on how growth should look like in this environment, continuing partners. And basically, on a handshake deal, the developer was ready to buy the mall. And on a handshake deal, based on a shared vision, the developer went ahead and pulled the trigger and bought the mall. And then, as the mall, as talks progressed, they built in a relationship and had built in flexibility. They ensured that the risk was on the developer, but not without support from the city to make these kind of things happen. So, just a quick recap on the initial phase. So, in 1999, that's when the handshake deal spurred the developer to pull the trigger and buy the land. And then, in 2000, the city and the developer put together an urban renewal plan, and so that's similar to when we had redevelopment. It's kind of like a redevelopment plan. And then, in 2001, they executed a finance agreement which memorialized the city's responsibilities and the developer's responsibilities. And then, ultimately, that same year, the Villa Mall closed, and demolition and site work took place. You can see here on the aerial, this is, well, they're well into the demolition here. That little building on the, the white building sticking out is the former Macy's. It's now the Dick's Sporting Goods at that site. And then, vertical construction started in 2003, and then, the first phase opened in 2004, which was kind of the central core to the site. And that first phase was a smaller chunk of the site, but it was a big chunk in terms of effectiveness and what the feeling it brought to the site. So, it had over 500,000 square feet of retail, which included not only just pure retail, but entertainment, a big movie theater, they had a number of restaurants, and a lot of different businesses, 70 different stores and businesses, 185,000 square feet of office, and then, 400 different residential types, units and different types, apartments, town homes, and condos. So, really a mix of densities and typologies. And then, the city built, or the developer built two parking structures to help support the ultimate growth that he was going to come behind this first phase. So, as I mentioned, it was a public-private partnership between the city and the developer. The developer was purchased the site, and then, the city entered a financial agreement with the developer. And this is where the developer levied a 2.5% public improvement or PIF fee on all sales that take place on the site, and that money's used to help pay off the bond that's required to provide the infrastructure. And recognizing that that would add cost to consumers that may give the site a competitive disadvantage to other nearby areas, the city waived 2% of their share of the sales tax. So, effectively, the PIF fee only increased the net cost on the site by 1.5%. So, it was still competitive in the region, especially considering the built environment and excitement around it. So, it was a $750 million private investment backed by $160 million in public improvements, which was financed by a $95 million bond, which is floated by the developer and backstopped by the land in which the mall resided. But the city did help set up the structure to repay those bonds through property tax increment. So, that's the difference between the mall's value when they demoed it essentially to the value today. They capture that value, and they use that value and change a property tax assessment to help pay off the bonds. And then, 50% of the lodgers' tax, or what we would call TOT tax here, is applied to that as well. And then, of course, all the public improvement fees that come in go to pay off that bond for, which made this happen. On the right here, you'll see, before the council was able to come out, Larry Dorr, on the far right of the screen, we had the benefit of meeting with him. He was the finance director at Lakewood when Belmar Mall was being figured out, and then, now, he's the finance director at Westminster, which we also had the benefit going to. So, it was great to meet with him, and he could compare and contrast the pros and cons of each model, the private-public-private partnership at Belmar versus the city as a developer in Westminster model. And so, he was able to provide some context on what works and what doesn't work, and some ideas, and it really was insightful to hear both sides of the story from him. So, this is just a series of progress of the Belmar Mall. You can see here, 2002, this is right when they started to do initial work, the bottom right corner is where they started building their detention basin that would ultimately serve the site. And then, over time, by 2008, you can see the central core here. This is the public plaza, the movie theater, and this really became a key entrance in the site. You can see housing starts building around the perimeter, and slowly but surely, they start making progress. And then, as you keep continuing down through the line, different buildings get shape, take shape. Target here comes online, which is a major sales tax generator, more housing, and it just slowly, over time, just builds in. And you can see, over time, just more and more, the hotel comes in. So, all that is additional revenue that's helping paint off those bonds. So, really, there is an incentive for the developer to make things happen, because it pays off their debt more quickly. So, it's in their best interest to make these things happen quickly and pay off that debt, and the city, retire the city's contribution, in which the city can bring in that revenue directly, more directly, too. And then, 2020, additional continued growth, and then, even now, their process, these two rectangles on here represent, the one on the left represents a multifamily project that's under review, and the one on the right is a boutique hotel. So, you can see that's just continuing to get more intense and more types of development in there. And they even think that some of the empty parking lots on the perimeter site will be next, so they're continuing to build momentum on what they've built here. And with that, I'll turn it over to Director Huber.
And we learned that Belmar is not done yet. There is room for additional development. The excitement continues on how to densify and diversify the site even more. This slide shows what Belmar will look like at full buildout, almost 800,000 square feet of retail, almost 900,000 square feet of office, a 75,000-square-foot movie theater, almost 200,000 square feet in hotels, and over 1,200 residential units. If we were to summarize the presentation thus far... If we were to summarize the presentation thus far, what we learned essentially is that this was a lot of really hard work of finding the right partner, building effective public-private partnerships, and starting digging into projects and deal making. And that's resulted in what Belmar is today. So it's about 22 city blocks, many or most of which we walked together last week, and it's created over 2,500 jobs in 110 businesses, which is significant. Retail right now sits at about 2 million square feet, 90% occupied, and almost 400,000 square feet of office, 88% occupied. I want to pause here and focus in on what we learned the value proposition is of office development as it relates to a mixed-use type of project, and specifically here at Belmar. Sometimes mixed-use developments, especially in this day and age, post-COVID, office can get a lot of skepticism. But the fact of the matter is, office is important to be able to program and produce daytime population that will shop in businesses, that will create foot traffic and generate additional economic impact. When you add the daytime population of office along with the nighttime population of residents, you're programming 24/7 economic impact, and that's why it's important. I also heard, as we were talking with folks at Belmar, a similar value proposition that Sunrise Tomorrow could in fact provide. We heard that Belmar offers an effective alternative to more expensive urban Denver office options, and while providing a great value proposition of a very amenity-rich environment, which is what office users really crave today. And they had some great flagship tenants, including Google, a great pole, props to Belmar for making that happen. So along with that retail and office, it's nearing 1,200 residential units and has executed over $160 million in public improvements. That includes streets, infrastructure, parking garages, acres of parks, along with a central square that offers activation opportunities for community events to increase quality of life in Belmar and beyond, along with stormwater detention. So in terms of Belmar today, there are two categories of revenue-producing mechanisms that we learned about. The first category is through financing mechanisms. Essentially, how Director Kempner shared that bonding was able to be effectively executed and managed through that public improvement fee generation that produces about 5.4 million annually, 100% going back to bond payment. The tax increment financing generation at about $2 million, again, 100% back to bond payment. I want to pause here because tax increment financing is a very common term that's used in economic development and specifically project financing. California being California, we like to be different. So while other states use tax increment financing, we have tools that are called community financing districts, enhanced infrastructure financing districts, and a couple of other honorary acronyms. But I want to remind council that a previous strategic planning objective from last year's cycle was to execute an infrastructure financing strategy. So the city of Citrus Heights has done the work to inventory all potential viable financing tools to be able to effectively implement infrastructure with the right developer. We have all of that information ready to go and even more ideas on how we can advance that glossary library to make sure we're prepared to deploy effectively to projects. You heard Director Kempner also mention the lodgers' tax generation. For us, that's a transient occupancy tax that is, happens with room nights in hotels. About 68,000 goes annually to that bond payment, and then the other half goes to the city for economic development. So those are the financing mechanisms. But as if not even more important is the economic impact that Belmar is creating. Really great gross retail sales from those 110 retail businesses, along with those office tenants that might have point of sales onsite, generating business-to-business sales tax as well. There are great property tax benefits, not only onsite, that measured a 435% increase in assessed value, but in the adjacent corridor. So thinking about what that looks like for our Sunrise Tomorrow specific plan, that's not just about the 100-acre mall site, creating that property value increase. That will trickle on down to the rest of Sunrise Boulevard, come on down to Greenback, and we'll see other property improvements catalyze as well. Finally, a use tax that generates about 180,000 toward the city's general fund. So on our visit, walking those 22 city blocks together, we saw a variety of real estate that showed how these projects can come to be and perhaps look like on the Sunrise Mall site as we move forward in the Sunrise Tomorrow specific plan. A variety of dense Belmar commercial to accommodate various types of businesses, along with a variety of residential. As Director Kempner mentioned, a handful of different housing stocks to accommodate all types of resident needs, anywhere from families to empty nesters and everything in between. We also saw a combination of home ownership and rentals as well. I think so.
So kind of wrapping up what we learned in talking to the various stakeholders and what we saw, actually, this quotes from Larry Doerr is be flexible, don't settle. So make sure you have that vision in place and know that it's going to evolve over time. They did not expect Target to come in, and that was actually something that really helped them out in terms of sales tax generation. So being flexible, but also holding true to your ultimate vision. In this case, it was a very urban environment. So that's what his word of advice was. He also mentioned like the alignment between the city and developer was key. That it happened through happenstance essentially for them, that they found this gentleman that was really aligned with their vision and what they wanted to do, and they worked together and worked through some bumps in their road to figure it out along the way. You know, things came up, they put their heads together and collaborated to figure out a way to overcome them. So that was really important. Obviously, as Director Huber talked about, the creative financing and city contributions, you know, the developer said this would not have happened without some stake of the of the city's contribution to make this happen, and that creative financing is what made that work. Also, just to point out that this will build community and quality of life, but you're not going to see immediate return on investment. It takes a while to repay those funds from the city, the opportunity cost from those funds. But as Director Huber pointed out, it does spark investment around the immediate area that is not leveraged by bonds. And so that growth really comes kind of tax-free, and that's a benefit to the community. And then also, lastly, but not least, is they have, you have to activate it. So in Belmar, they have the ownership group of the commercial area. They do a routine activation. They just had a St. Patrick's Day event. They do the ice skating. They do summer concerts. They do a Fourth of July event. And this is where the people of Lakewood come to gather for those events to really explore, and this is where they come to know is this is the place I want to go to check out and experiment, experience different events.
And Casey, putting a finer point on that, that was another partnership that we heard from Belmar is extremely important. It's not just about developer partnerships. It's about long-term property owner partnerships.
Okay, so we'll do a recap after both malls are done here. But transitioning to downtown Westminster, you can see on the left what it looked like in 1989, and you can see what it looks like now in 2024. Obviously, a couple decades in between there and a lot of hard work, similar to Belmar, different approach. In this case, the city purchased the mall. They went out with RFP to try to find a developer to work with. They were unsuccessful at finding someone that had the shared vision with them. And so what they ultimately decided to do was to act as the master developer themselves. So it's a lot different model, a lot more risk involved for that particular city and a lot, significant investment as well. So the city put in about $120 million between the mall purchase and infrastructure. And really, they have a fiscal model that's 50 years plus before they'll get that full repayment back. And the model allows the city to sell off pieces, piece by piece. So in this map here, you can see that the gray squares are ones, buildings that are in place. All the light blue is yet to be built. So they have a long ways to go. They think they're about 30% done. And there are some headwinds coming down the pike with the economy, and they see a slowing pattern. But they also see people anxious to market windows open and close all the time. So they're getting ready to plan and entitle things, and then when the market comes back, they'll hit the ground running. So they do some, see some opportunities there. The city manages the site use, so events, landscaping, plazas, that's all their responsibility. They are dedicated to keeping it clean. They're dedicated to activating it. But that does require a robust team. They have about five city staff members directly allocated to the site for most of their day. So there's people on the ground, there's people in the office, there's a lot, a really robust team. And then they have a consultant team that averages about $150,000 a year in terms of supporting those efforts to supplement staff. They have a real estate team that markets this and is plugged into the development community. They have a legal team dedicated to this, as well as a finance team to keep the fiscal side of things moving. So it's a significant investment on their part. And there are some results. I think they look different than Belmar. I think the council would agree on that. It's definitely a work in progress more so you can see the photo on the bottom here. There are some vacant spaces that will maybe vacant for quite a while. So knowing that they're not going to see that return on their investment from that or the community building that comes along with that either. They do have a variety of housing types similar to Belmar. This is like a row house kind of product. They also have vertical mixed use, as you see here on the bottom left, as well as this gray building is affordable housing. So kind of a mix of housing typologies. I thought what's interesting about this one is this is the best performing JCPenney's in Colorado, and so they want to stay. So the city ended up buying the Penny's box and the parking around it and leases it back. And so that revenue from that lease back helps pay for some of the staff and the time for the consultants they use. And you can see here on this picture, this used to be the door on the bottom here of Penny's that used to go into the mall itself, the inline shops. And so when the mall demoed, they they left that for a future connection at some date they'll connect. And they're going to wrap this buildings at some day with retail shops to allow more, more inviting environment rather than the blank JCPenney's wall. And then lastly, they have a robust marketing program they do. This is a handout they gave us. They do a lot of marketing to try to pull in interest to the site and bring in developers to, with a shared vision. So some lessons learned from Westminster, long-term ROI, they're in it for over 50 years before they fully see a return. Even then, the first projects that have come in have required heavy subsidies where they really discount the land cost just to get the ball rolling, to get some movement out there. So that's additional years on it, on terms of repayment. They are in the process of building a $10 million public plaza park, which is a significant investment, but they believe that's going to help draw in the developments around that will be more valuable as a result of looking onto a park. The city does believe they have additional control by who they'd sell land to. They won't sell land to someone, just anyone. They'll want to make sure that person has a shared vision, so they do like that control. And then, as I mentioned, the plan does provide for the reuse of the existing pennies. So that, that's our mall repurposing conversation, but we would love to answer any questions or hear the council's discussion as well.
Let's start with the guy who made this happen.
Thank you, Mayor. It is, it, everybody's still awake out there? Because that was a lot of, no offense, you did a great presentation, but it's a lot of numbers and stuff. I just like to kind of bring the human side of it. This was a, it is a, it's a development that felt friendly. And when we look at the Westminster product, it didn't, it felt very cold. There was even buildings there that kind of looked like prisons to me. But when you look at Belmar, it was a true gathering place that the community came to. And when I say it snowed every day there, it was freezing cold. The picture of me standing there with, holding my binder, I'm like, what a terrible mistake that was, because my hands were freezing. It was probably 30-something degrees outside there. But when the Friday night came around, all of the streets were full, all the street, on-street parking, the restaurants were full, the snow and the and the cold did not keep people away. And that speaks volumes to, to what the, how the community responds to something that they really feel a sense of connection with. And and I think that's truly what we're, what we're looking to build here is a, is an experience that, that not only our own residents can appreciate, but people coming from other parts of the region can come in and enjoy our restaurants and enjoy, and we can enjoy their revenue. I mean, that's really what this is about, excuse me. But that's, that's really my comment. And again, nothing, it was, you know, talking about how the taxes and financing and all that stuff goes, that is a necessity piece of this equation. But when we talk to the, I just want to kind of speak to the public and convey what I got out of this, it's a really warm and enjoyable and not, you called it an urban, it doesn't feel urban. It really doesn't. It feels just like a village. It really is a really cool experience. So there's my comment.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Schaefer, for bringing this to us. Pardon me, I'm just adjusting it, but I didn't realize it would make that noise. It was really valuable to be there on the ground and to actually walk these developments. If, you know, there's one thing I remember from my time in real estate is that photos can lie and tell a different story. And when you actually go get to see the property, it's a whole different experience. And I agree with what Councilmember Schaefer said about the, the bustling kind of nature of it that we saw on Friday night, even though it was cold, snowing, there were still people out. It was on a weekday, albeit a Friday. And so that was really nice to see. It did feel like a village, a warm village, as opposed to kind of like downtown Sacramento being an urban center that's kind of cold and stark. And so that does align with our Sunrise Tomorrow plan, so that was really cool to see. The difference between the Belmar and the Westminster properties was striking, and I have to wonder if part of that, aside from being different development models, was just the timing of development. Westminster kind of got started later, so they had to go through COVID and hit those delays. So I'm curious to see where they go over the next couple of years, but it seems like they have a good plan in place. So there were a lot of good nuggets that we took away, and I'm excited to further the conversation after this experience. Thank you for bringing us.
Councilmember Middleton.
Councilmember Schaefer, again, we cannot thank you enough for, you know, really pushing for this because when we went out there and we're walking around, I mean, I walked 15,000 steps. And look, no, okay? But there was so much stuff to see there, and it was just all just right there. And as you're walking, you're walking past the Target, you're walking past an ice cream shop. There was a Nordstrom rack that we never got to visit, but we won't bemoan the point. But the whole thing is, when you look at this picture that's up here right now, and you see this parking garage that is basically hidden. I love the way they integrated parking. There's so much parking there that people don't have to worry about parking on the street. They can just go park in the garage, and you walk out that garage, you're in the store, you walk out that store, you're in the middle of, you know, just, I would like to call it maybe even a shopping district, right? Because every time I turned around, I saw something that I wanted to go and buy. And that's what I want for Citrus Heights. I want to have that opportunity where there's this diversity of things and stuff to do. There was just so much, and I felt like the trip probably wasn't quite long enough for us to really experience what was there, but we got a good taste of what's possible.
There was a pet supply place, kind of kitty corner to the hotel, and we didn't get a chance to go anywhere. Place, Mayor, how'd you do?
You know, the one word I keep coming back to is inspired, and I think to have an experience in person is very, very different than studying the history and the website even. You had to be on the ground. And, you know, everywhere you turn, it did feel like a village. I'm so glad you introduced that word because I was trying to figure out for myself, why did it feel so convenient? And there are all level of format of retail store, eateries of all different kinds. There were walk-up ice cream shops, there are traditional format coffee shops, and this was right across the street from our hotel. The hotel was the right size. I think they have only 130 rooms. And that felt like a warm gathering space, an extension of the, the city format. They had senior housing, and that for me... space, an extension of the city format. They had senior housing. And that, for me, at this stage in my life, and working with my aging parent, really warmed my heart because they talk about affordable housing, but sometimes in communities, we forget that seniors are part of our community as well, and they want to remain vibrant, independent ability to go to those same shops without having to get into a car or public transportation. And the Belmar property really felt like their new downtown. The other thing that I didn't realize, looking at our own Sunrise Tomorrow Plans, how wonderful it is when you break up what looks like a big block of 100 acres into smaller blocks. And these, I would say they're not traditional block sizes, they're much smaller. How friendlier the feel is because all the blocks are very walkable. No matter if you, you know, are older and have slower steps, or smaller and have smaller steps, you will get to something, some amenity that you are interested in going to. And again, it's true, the financing options and those strategies, we understand those are all going to be worked through in their due time. But I think for council, catching the vision and feeling the feelings of what we could be, that was the most valuable part for me because I read, I read recently our Sunrise Tomorrow Plan, cover to cover. And I thought, this is amazing. But I wonder what it looks like. You know, I can imagine, because we have great imaginations, but what would it look like? And when I went to Belmar, I felt like I could place those pieces as we walked around the community. And so that, for me, was placing our Sunrise Tomorrow Plan in real life. Now, much has been mentioned about the Westminster property, and it was a different property, you know? It was, the strategy and approach was different, and it was started at a different time. And I really feel that if we went to Belmar at the same timeframe that we saw Westminster, we would probably feel the same way. It's, you know, these boxes, there's a lot of dirt, there's a lot of road, but there's so much possibility. You know, it had very, each community had its own look and feel. And what I appreciated the most about Westminster was that they were willing to be a little bit old-timey funky with modern contemporary materials and things like that. So I really think that was, that was the most appealing about, at least the aesthetic of Westminster. And aesthetic can change, but I liked that they were looking at that as their something special. Or as my French teacher would say, their je ne sais quoi. But overall, the other, the other one point I want to make here is the vertical use of space. I always see Citrus Heights as kind of a one, maybe two-story kind of town. This gave me a different view of what we could be with two stories and up. And it didn't feel oppressive. It didn't feel like a concrete jungle, which, you know, many people think of when they think going vertical. And I think that space, a mixed-use space of office above retail or housing above retail was an excellent use of space. And that is why they are getting and commanding the office-use space because office workers want to have somewhere to go during their lunch break. They want to grab their coffee somewhere. They want to hit the yoga and gyms early in the morning and late afternoons. And this community is giving it to them where they live, where they work. It's very convenient. I think they get a lot of traffic just with people being there for one purpose and finding all their other purposes, too.
I thought there was more. First of all, I wanted to reiterate the thank you to Casey for organizing this. It took a lot of work to organize. You can see I'm in my little ride-along chair because I couldn't have walked 50 blocks? No. So my takeaway, and I saw something in the Sentinel that thought we were going on vacation. This was not a vacation. We, we didn't have time to vacate. And we, like I said, we didn't even have time to shop. And the view, like if you saw the LA fires in person, is a lot different than looking at a picture or watching a video. So it was equivalent to that. You have to see it to understand it. We have a vision in our Sunrise Tomorrow Plan, so it starts with the vision. Then, I see the difference between Westminster and Belmar as a difference in who you hired for your design. Because the design of Belmar was so incredibly good. I worry about the housing in our Sunrise Tomorrow Plan. Everybody says, how are we going to fit 2,200 units? Well, I was shocked at how good the housing was at Belmar. It was, there was different heights, different designs. It didn't, it was all different. You did not feel like you were in a projects, you know? And even though there was so many housing units there, but you didn't feel like you were, it was almost like luxury living. Would you say the 2,200 a month for the, was that what the, that what you told me? Who told me that? Affordable housing? I'm not sure it's that affordable.
That was a different project.
Oh, different project, okay. So I'm not sure how affordable, affordable is because, but they had, you go down the sidewalk and they had little machines where you could take out the dog pooper bags, if you'd walk on your dog. That was cool. And it was just a community. My comment, though, which you would not see from a movie, was that it's not kid-friendly, you know? And I think that was brought up by one of the employees at the hotel. It wasn't really, other than maybe the ice skating rink in the middle of the thing, but, but there was no fast foods, not a single fast food restaurant in there. Everything was a sit-down, various cultural restaurant, cultural foods, but no, no fast food, no automotive uses. There was a Chick-fil-A just on the outside of the mall square. That's where it belonged, kind of like would be our birdcage. It was an experience. And that hotel was like incredible, 130, and it was crowded. You know, I asked somebody, I said, what did you come to this hotel to see? You know? They went, they were going to just have a little séance or something, whatever they're going to do. So I thought that was, the landscaping was the other thing that I just think was incredible. And how if you have the right trees going down those main drags, we saw them when they're all naked and bare, but there was some pictures that he had from his Secog trip where they were in bloom. These are great trees. So it was good planning.
One right in that picture.
Well, that's a naked one. But when they're in bloom and they're only so many feet apart, it's like being down a, walking down an aisle of flowers. It was beautiful. It was a good experience, good experience. We know how our vision can be. We got that vision. And so, let's go to move on to the public market next.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so another stop on our tour was the Edgewood Public Market in, oh, sorry, Edgewater Public Market, which is, Edgewater is a one-square-mile town outside of Denver, too. So this was a former grocery store location on a seven-acre site. It had a 50,000-square-foot grocery store that had been vacant for quite some time. The city purchased the property, trying to control its destiny a little bit, and had a couple of different fits and starts of different ideas. And eventually, a few years ago, they found a developer to partner with them to really make this a really vibrant place. So it's, what they did is carved up the former grocery store into dozens of different shops, and there are smaller footprint shops, and arranged from all sorts of food to retail, entertainment, wellness, they even have a tattoo parlor in there, a rooftop bar with an Airstream trailer bar thing up there, and outdoor event space that they programmed during the summer. So the city had purchased this, sat on it for a while, and then found this developer to work with. And as part of the development agreement, they sold it below market rate in order, but in exchange, the developer has to have a certain mix of uses that guarantees city revenues instead of just being all service uses. They wanted a sales tax and reuse as part of that. So that development agreement ensures that moving forward. So as you can see here, this is a view from the outside. Definitely could tell, had a grocery store feel to it at one point, and now it looks a lot different. Additional photos from the outside, you can see really transition from, I saw prior photos, it was just a very barren area, and now it looks like a very vibrant. You can see they bring events in. They have a brewery in there, and they have all these common areas for tables, for people, community can gather. We were there about 3 o'clock on Friday, so a little bit, as we were walking out, it was really starting to get hopping. And now I'll turn it over to Dr. Huber for the Arts District.
And Casey, one other thing I'll add about the public market before we leave the topic is what I really appreciated. In economic development, we see numerous concepts like these in urban or destination areas. And what I really appreciated seeing on the ground here is how this concept is successful in a decidedly suburban area. It was tucked into a residential neighborhood, a lot of similar components to the city of Citrus Heights. And it was, it was really exciting to see something be successful in an environment similar to Citrus Heights.
The pictures didn't show what, you know, off that main big room, the big room, they also show movies in the big room. But what the pictures didn't show were all the shops. I mean, you could go get a haircut, you could, there was a guy getting his, sweeping the floor for his hair, you know? I thought that was cool.
Tattoos, so you can get a tattoo.
And this is a city that is one square mile. The city is one square mile. And they can sustain that. And so I, that was an incredible experience. And they had eateries, you know, just in this big room, you could go to that window and get something to eat, or go to that window and get something to eat. It was kind of like a big giant food court.
So moving on to our final highlight, the 40 West Arts District. I know council has heard staff say quite a bit that the most effective economic development, we're never going to be the doers in local government. The way we can best do economic development is as brokers, facilitators, and catalysts. And this project was a prime example of how you can catalyze arts destination initiatives with the right public-private partnership and scrappy but effective toolbox. So the partnership for the 40 West Arts District was a combination of a 501(c)(3) estate creative district along Colfax Avenue, also coincidentally, Lincoln 40. So I want to pause here and just highlight how special this is. We were on Lincoln 40 in Colorado after having freshly spent time along Lincoln 40 in Citrus Heights, I'm sure most of us a day or two before. So a direct connection to Citrus Heights heritage and almost a turnkey project scope right there waiting to happen. In fact, we were talking about this as staff this morning, and we were even playing around with the idea of like sister-city project opportunities. We were geeking out pretty good. So it was really exciting to see this kind of project on Lincoln 40 with these kinds of partnerships. The second partner is the Lakewood West Colfax Business Improvement District. And their management district plan is an arts-focused business improvement district. So that includes things like economic development, capital investment, annual funding support, rent subsidies, art programs, and First Friday events to pull together this really, really great arts-driven initiative. So this is a flyover of what this arts destination is turning into. Previously, this was in an almost 100% vacant shopping center with one longtime restaurant. Over time, with arts programming and events, it has been boosted up to practically full occupancy.
I need to add on here that this little section here is the gallery that the bid had helped purchase. And they do a First Friday event there every Friday, every First Friday of the month. And we were able to go in there, and I think that's seven different galleries in there. Even, and again, even though it was snowy and cold, it was starting to get pretty busy. It was pretty cool seeing people coming out to support that.
And in terms of direct local government connection, how local government catalyzed this project, we did learn over interviews with public officials that the city provided a very moderate nominal amount of seed funding to be able to start up this holistic effort. So this just gives you a slice of how this arts district is really transforming their local area. Casey, do you want to share a little bit about the art line?
Sure. Yeah, so as part of the Arts District, they had all these folks that wanted to be able to display their art. And they had some big pieces. And so they're like, how can we do that? And so they have a four-mile art line, as you can see on the green line painted on the sidewalk there, and it goes on some trails, too. Four miles, and it connects over 70 pieces of art spread throughout the four-mile radius. And it really is cool. It runs from sculptures to murals and everything in between. And in the center of that is their, the hub, which was the gallery that we got to go to. So it kind of all pulls it together. A lot of pride in it. I met a gentleman on the walk that he actually designed this little box here, and he cleans, still cleans them every day. And, or not every day, but on a regular basis, he comes and cleans them and makes sure they're, it's still in good shape. And he was the artist on that. So it was pretty cool. Lot of investment. And as Dr. Huber said, really turned over that center from a really rough center that was really declining, and now it's fully occupied. So it really helped transition that. The bid also does help subsidize rents, because as places gentrify from things like this, rents become unsustainable for artists. So that's one of the things that the bid helps do is keep those rents at a reasonable rate for artists that can, you know, stay
So what we learned as we were touring the 40 West Arts District is that this was an example of a really effective use of art to foster redevelopment and reinvestment in a very grassroots, pragmatic way, a use-what-you-got plan. And as Casey said, it transitioned the nearly vacant center to 100% occupied. It's consistently activated with monthly activities around the arts to build district synergy. Really exciting when we consider our arts and culture initiatives to wrap our arms around Citrus Heights homegrown artists and what it could look like. And the bid serves as a really effective partner and fiscal backstop to support the arts. Again, the importance of public-private partnerships.
So with that, we'd like to turn it back over to the council for any discussion.
Looking at me. All right. This was actually something I found to be very, very interesting, just how it was integrated into this, the city and working with the bid. The art was multiple, multiple artists that were there. It wasn't just, you know, like, there was, the front area actually was operated by the organization, but the rest of that huge space was individual artists that had leases, and it really helped out. And so you got to see something, it was, in my opinion, better than going to the Crocker Museum, right? Because just you got to see pottery, you got to see, you know, other kinds of ceramics, you got to see acrylics. We saw some beautiful watercolors. They were just amazing, blow your mind. But it was a space where the artists were there, they were working, kind of a co-op style. And it was just amazing. Again, we did not get enough time to kind of sit there and watch. It was late in the evening, and we were like, gosh, we got to go on a plane tomorrow. But it was still very enjoyable to kind of see what that, what that Arts District did and how it transformed that area. Because I'll admit, outside of that district, it was looking rough. Yeah, it was not great, but this really helped in the area that it was in.
Place Mayor?
I really like that they took an area and they took a need and they created something pretty amazing. You know, the art line, that green line really kind of delineates for the community, what are we doing here? We're giving you opportunity not only to walk around your community, which is healthy, but to experience art in a different way. And I think, you know, it uplifted that entire community because it's not a super-rich community, right? It's a, it's a little bit more needy community, and I think they found a way to create vibrancy with what they had and preferred to support versus taking some random use. Now, the other thing that really impressed me was the public market. I was absolutely blown away, and I wrote down for myself, it's an entrepreneur's Mecca. Because there are tiny format stores where an entrepreneur who's just starting out could lease a very small space, whether they were a food vendor or a retail, I mean, we saw a plant vendor there. That was my favorite. Because, you know, where do you see a plant, plants being sold, other than, you know, big-box stores? And she was doing a great business, you know? And everyone had a place, and it seemed like it would be affordable to be in that place. And I think- And I think I've always envisioned, as someone who's been an entrepreneur and has worked with entrepreneurs, envisioned a space where we can provide somewhat of a hub for our local creatives, small business-minded individuals. And, you know, with the USSBA here in our backyard and neighbor, how that could activate that entrepreneur world in order to have a place of their own as well. So I really, really enjoyed the public market format.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Oh.
I'm just going this way.
Thank you. So I, I want to really just dovetail on what Councilmember Lopez Taft mentioned. I was really impressed with the, with the public market as well. The, the tattoo parlor that was in there was interesting. It was really something, it was clean, it was quite professional. There was a guy laying on the table getting a tattoo on his back. It just didn't feel like a seedy tattoo parlor. It felt like this is a business that's, that's taking care of business as they should, and it's healthy, and it's, it was really, really cool to, it was kind of open. I don't know, sure, you know, if you're getting a tattoo in a specific, specific place, that's probably not what I would choose to do there. But, but nonetheless, just the, the public market, the number of businesses, the variety of, if you brought a family in there and, hey, we can't all decide on the same thing, so each family can go and get whatever food they want. I just thought it was really cool. It was really just, again, warm and friendly and, and well-done. And to touch base on the, on the art gallery, I enjoy the art gallery immensely because the artists were right there on hand. I talked to the, one of the artists there, and she told me what she called her pieces and what was, what was the inspiration to her piece. You could take a piece of art, and if you kind of understand the story and the, and the message that artist is trying to communicate to you, it really means a lot more. And there was, it was amazing. Most of these pieces of art were very reasonable in price. You know, they weren't, they were maybe a couple hundred dollars at the most. It makes it, you can understand the story, what the artist is trying to convey, and you can buy it for a reasonable price. I wasn't going to buy anything because I had to take the stuff on an airplane. But nonetheless, it was, it was really, a really fun experience. I wish we had the time and the weather would have cooperated to do the whole, the whole green line, because I would have liked to enjoy, I would have enjoyed that a lot. But this is a brilliant, just the, what they've done in Edgewater is just truly amazing.
I really enjoyed both of these projects. The public market, I agree, was like an entrepreneur's Mecca. It just had all these little shops. It seems like it could absolutely fit in our city, something like that, where people can just go hang out. It's not the huge mall plan, it's all indoors. And, and like Councilmember Schaefer said, you could bring your family and not all eat the same thing for dinner, which is, is really neat. And all be in the same space, you know, still see each other. And then the art line is so cool, and I love that it's on the Lincoln Highway. That just really reinforces to me the, the cool location that we have as the city of Citrus Heights. We're part of this historic highway that ran across the country. And we could absolutely do something like this and have an orange line or something, you know, along our sidewalk. Yeah. So these two projects were really special to see, and I'm glad that I got to be there to take them all in. I think they were really important stops on our tour.
The public market would be perfect for Sylvan Corners at the corner. And, and then you'd have your orange line go up Auburn Boulevard from there, and, and those benches, the 40 benches, the green one. And our city manager says we could have them all different colors. You have a green one, a pink one, I'll meet you at the blue bench, meet you at the orange bench. And so I just think, I think that was a doable vision, because we own the Sylvan property, and we don't have to buy anything, we just got to find somebody that wants to build it. And if they build it, we will come. So it's, it's, and art is a catalyst. Our city has been art-hungry for a long time, and because of all the things going on, it's always been down on the bottom of the do list. And so now I think with our interest in getting the Arts Council and the arts working together in our city is going to generate more public interest. I think that some of the businesses along Auburn Boulevard would benefit from some, some of the graffiti, whatever you call it, on the sides of buildings, the murals, but that, it would dress up Auburn Boulevard. Some of the buildings could use that kind of murals, and so.
Since we are talking about murals and we might have public watching at home, it's my obligation to share that we do have a history and arts grant program. So if someone is interested in implementing a mural, you can visit our website under Economic Development and Community Engagement.
Well, downtown Sacramento has some terrific murals too, so it's, and we don't have any. Well, no, we don't really, we got the, the box covers that we're going to get, right?
The ones behind Staples is beautiful.
Yeah, there are a couple in the sunrise marketplace.
You have to drive in south and look to the left and not be looking straight ahead, that one there. It's, yeah, it's nice, but it's not really in your way. It's not in your face like these other ones are, you know, where you go down the street. That was a really good tour. I'm glad you lined that up, you know?
Yes, good job, Casey.
How'd you learn about, how'd you learn about Edgewater?
As I researched this and talked to the planning staff at Lakewood, she, one of the planners that, I was in charge of the art line, mentioned, you got to check this place out, it's really cool. And so I looked into it, and I was like, yeah, I think our council might, might get a kick out of that.
And I did go online and look at it, you know, because it won some nationwide award for its style. It's, and it's really not fancy, it's nice. The ceiling was real high, like an old-fashioned building that was empty, and you just, it just felt good. It was like, she said, she says, you know, if you just want to have a business where you string guitars, you don't need a lot of square feet, you know, you just need a small shop. So that was, that was pretty cool. It was a good, it was very good. Is there more? Are we done?
Well done.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar, item number 10. The subject is Ordnance Amending Citrus Heights Municipal Code, Chapter 38, Regarding Fire Prevention and Protection Related to Fireworks. And the recommendation is to introduce for our first reading, a read by title only in Ordnance Amending Citrus Heights Municipal Code, Chapter 38, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 3, Fireworks, Section 38-78 and 38-81.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Chief Turcot, here to discuss our fireworks ordinance update. This update will be to Sections 38-78 and 38-81 for the Fire Prevention and Protection Act. A little bit of history here, the city has had a social host ordinance for illegal fireworks for about the past three years. Obviously, over the last couple of years, in line with all of the vibrancy that we've been trying to bring to the city and the quality of life improvements, fireworks remains a significant city concern, not only for the noise pollution of the community, but actually for safety hazards as well. You know, every year, unfortunately, somebody misses, misuses fireworks and can set houses on fire and have a real safety liability. So aerial fireworks are beautiful when they're done by professionals, but in the hands of folks not following safety guidelines, it can be a real mess for people. So we did discuss at our strategic planning session and analysis by Commander Wells's team and some of the, the ideas that they're bringing forward in this, to enhance our efficacy with our fireworks ordinance, or I'm sorry, our fireworks enforcement. Updating our ordinance to be in line with some of the regional best practices was one of the items that was noted, and so that's why we brought it here to council today. The proposed language change, you'll see here to the chapter. This is what we learned from one of our neighboring agencies, was just a clarification piece to better explain to the community exactly where and when they would be liable for some of this issue. So public right-of-way encompasses all of these items, but to be more clear to folks, that includes the streets, the sidewalks, or any property that appears to be under the host's immediate control. And that was added to that for clarity. This is an overview of the region. This is where the current ordinance sits here on the top, so you'll see Citrus Heights currently is at 750 for the first violation. Second violation and on there is $1,000. Currently, our ordinance just cites a violation, it doesn't have a per-firework or per-device penalty. And looking around the region, several of our local partners have increased those fines and penalties, and they've included enhancements for each firework as its own separate violation. Now, obviously, it's not the city's intent to try to make money off of this issue. What we're trying to do is bring awareness to folks that the city's taking this seriously, the police department's taking this seriously, and just make it not worth it. Go to the fireworks show, we have an awesome one that happens here in the city that you can see. Be safe and sane if, if it's during those time periods, but for the unlawful fireworks, just don't do it. It's just not worth the time or effort. So the proposed, the proposal here is to bring our ordinance more in line with those best practices. So on the bottom of the table, you'll see what the proposed ordinance will be, which is $1,000 for first violation, $2,500 for second violation, $5,000 for a third violation, and at the time of the violation, each firework device that is found to be in violation would be its own violation. So on the first violation, if you had five illegal mortar devices out there, that would be a $5,000 charge on your first violation. The recommendation is to accept the first reading and waive by title and amend the ordinance, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody have questions before I ask for a public comment?
No question. I just have a comment that people who are using illegal fireworks are literally playing with fire, you know, like this is a serious thing, it can cause damage. And so I appreciate you saying the city's not trying to make money, we're just trying to make it not worth it. So this seems like it'll do that.
Questions? Questions? Okay, let's do our public comment. I'll do David first, and then you can read the one you have, Amy, okay? Okay, David, you want to get up there? Thank you for your patience.
My name is David B. Shelton. I want to talk to you about my success on the issue of fireworks. This began as an issue after the Fourth of July in 2024. From my house, I could see two major fireworks aerial displays, one on my crustway and the other behind the house across the street. I live in a green belt behind my house, and I was concerned about a fire burning down my house. Fireworks were used to light in the street, they went over the two-story house into the green belt. My concern was that if there was a fire in the limited access green belt, it could burn my house down, and I personally would be sever a half a million dollar loss. Fireworks enforcement has been lax in Citrus Heights. It's only two days a year, and doing something proactive would cost money and involve Citrus Heights Police attempting to photograph for evidence the actual lighting and active participant of a residence. I proposed a $1,000, $2,000, and then $5,000 for the first, second, and third offense. The city council checked with other cities around us. We are the only city without enforcement throughout enforcement. Tonight, the issue is adding to the municipal code 38-78 wording. The wording includes street and/or sidewalk or property under the host's apparent control. This is an attempt to correct this oversight. Also, used an extensive notification of residents of a change of enforcement on fireworks, that we're going to really tell the residents, we're serious about this fireworks stuff. You get illegal fireworks, you're going to get caught, and you're going to cost money. Since then, it's only two nights of a 365-night year. So we have the Seek, Click, and Fix app, and I encourage use of the code enforcement vehicles. The code enforcement vehicles, they're, they're not police, but you see a white car drive up, and it says code enforcement on the outside, you know someone's watching you. Currently, use of drones is considered too costly. The city of Rancho Cordova hires an outside drone operator. The problem with drones is you have to have someone who's licensed by the Federal Administration for Aeronautics to operate the drone. So it's a major investment in time and money. So you don't want to have someone sitting on your staff who's a drone operator, because there isn't that much use for them. But in this case, the city of Rancho Cordova, they spent $13,000 in 2013, or 2023, they spent $24,000 in 2025, it almost doubled. And my opinion is that if it, even if it costs $50,000 in 2025, if one home burning down costs half a million, it appears to be an effective cost. If the house was mine, the city of Citrus Heights would be one of the first ones I would file a suit against for not providing future safety for my house. And even again, if there's no, even if there's no fire until 2030, $50,000 versus $500,000 makes sense to me. Citrus Heights should consider a $1,000 fine, and I see we've got that there for each firework, each year in addition to the fines being proposed tonight. I continue to talk with the mayor every Monday during the nine to noon mayor's available public comment time. So far, no one, no one takes advantage of this opportunity except me. Yet, people complain about not being able to accomplish anything, not knowing anything. I'm here to tell you that what I have done over the last year shows persistence pays off in success. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I have one more speaker sheet, and then we'll do your telephone. Dennis Revell.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Dennis Revell, here on behalf of our client TNT Fireworks. We stand here in full support of the amendments presented to you in this evening's ordinance amendment, and we appreciate the city's longstanding support of the community's nonprofit organizations. And with tonight's ordinance amendment, Citrus Heights will continue to be a model for responsible, well-regulated fireworks enforcement. However, having it on the books is only half of the issue. The second half is actually following through and having the enforcement with these improvements. In an effort to provide clarity on the myths and reality as it relates to state-approved safe and sane fireworks, we recently published the Clearing the Air brochure, which I've shared with you this evening. And we stand in, as a partner in safety, as well as a, as a partner in enforcement. We supported the social host ordinance and advocated for it when it was adopted here three years ago, and we look forward to working with the community in 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. And our letter writer?
The written public comment is from Sherry McCormick, and she writes, "I am glad to see that this amendment is being worked on. I live between Carriage, Van Marren, Auburn, and Cobalt. I have no problem with people shooting off their fireworks, in parentheses, legal, within a reasonable time, but when some decide to set off their illegal ones at 10:30 PM or later, it is very disturbing to all concerned. Not only does it disturb those sleeping, the animals are affected as well." And that concludes her comment.
Okay. I have a couple of questions before we go to comments. Is there a limit? I got a letter from a resident. Is there a limit on $50,000 is the limit? Is that the, is there a limit on how much? You guys, oh, no, I'm looking at the thing we just got, and it's like, doesn't seem to be a limit. And how does somebody get fined 100 grand? How do they pay that back? Do we, how do we enforce the payments?
I would defer to our city attorney for some of the cap.
How does that work?
Yeah.
I mean, it's one thing to say, we're going to fine somebody 100 grand. One citation was for $100,000. How, how do you enforce that?
Yeah, I mean, it could be, it could be a challenge, but we definitely have a, a legal right to do it. We just, we could eventually file an action that they, in, in superior court for their lack of payments. Whether that, that costs more money, additional funds to do that, but that would be, you know, an addition, a worst-case scenario, we could, we could even take those actions to get a judgment that it's forced to pay.
Is it, is it just the host? And so the, the letter I got- And so the, the letter I got said, what if I get my son to take care of my dog while I'm gone? And while he's taking care of my dog, he throws some rockets up in the air, and he comes back for vacation, and his son's got a fine there for, against him for 50 grand, and he wasn't there. But he was the owner of the property.
Sure. So like with any, with any violation, you have due process rights, right? So we definitely will hear folks and take that into account, and we'll follow just like we would with a code enforcement violation or even a parking ticket. In some other jurisdictions where they were very significant fines, that per-device amendment there, if you have a big supply when they get there, the fines can go exponential really quickly. And so what we have seen in other jurisdictions is the administrative version of like a plea agreement, that they'll hold the fine in abeyance and agree to good actors on that part of that, that property. So in some cases, the fine is greatly reduced or held in abeyance if they prom, if they can show good behavior for a period of years. And if they violate it during that time, the full, the full fine can come due. And just a standard enforcement aspect on there, you know, the, the property owner is responsible for their, their property. These fines could end up going to collections. In some aspects, they could end up on a tax bill. The best thing to do for anybody out there that has that concern is watch your property. Don't let it happen, because we'd rather not be in a position of having to deal with a $100,000 fine on somebody. That's a really untenable issue. But if you can curb that behavior from the beginning, we won't be in that issue.
Is the one, two, three offenses all a one-year? Is this first, second, third offense one-year or in their lifetime? Or how, how do you measure first offense, second offense, third offense?
Generally, I don't know if this code specifically speaks to it, but in general, it would be within a year is the general, but Daniel Ryan, if you know more on that one. But yeah, we would.
It ought to be clear.
We would, the code doesn't speak to that. But if it's been an extensive period of time, a year, I think we would start over.
So second, the second year, he got caught one year, and then the next year, he's still back at number one again?
We have the ability to continue those, to consider those to be multiple instances. But I think a reasonable interpretation would be an extended period of time, which is probably over a year, would, would start over.
I just wanted to clarify because of the letter I received. So in case this person is hearing, then he hears I'm asking the questions. And, and that's end of those questions. You have a question?
Yes, I, I just, it was my understanding on the previous one that number one is the host has the ability to cooperate with the, with the investigation. And if it wasn't him, and he's willing to cooperate with you and find the responsible party, that's how, in my, in my mind, that's how the ordinance works. Is that incorrect?
Well, the ordinance puts the onus on the property owner. But through the due process, that's the whole reason to be able to have hearings and have a hearing officer make decisions, is so that we can apply common sense to the letter of the law. We do that with every criminal case that we have, every administrative case that we have. So if a person can come in and show that, you know, while they might have been responsible for the property, they were, it was out of their control, or they were gone, or any of those type of things. And we have had those. We have had those here, but we'll hear them out and, you know, try to be reasonable, right? The whole point here, like we talked about earlier, we're not looking to make money here. We're looking to curb behavior. So if we can make sure that one property does not repeat having this issue, and that has to be a fine, okay. We would rather, it was education, and we would rather be reasonable at those times. So I think the due process part of those violations is where a lot of that conversation can come in.
What if it's out in the middle of a court? How do you know where that is?
That's part of the clarification for under the host's apparent control. So a lot of times here, we'll lean on our community witnesses. You know, I mean, I, I know, I've, I've, I've seen these things before too, where somebody will drag a mortar tube out to the middle of the street, light off some fireworks, and drag it back and hide it in their garage. We depend on our community to be good witnesses. And when we do our investigation there, a lot of times, people will point out who the responsible party is.
So what's the appeals process? If, if the hearing officer hears it, and the hearing officer rules against that particular party, what is, is, is there an appeal to the, to the hearing officer?
Yeah, all of our codes have an appeals process. I believe on this one, and Ryan, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the council will be the ultimate appeal authority. So if the, you know, if the hearing officer decision wants to be challenged, it could be challenged there. But I'll tell you, my own internal staff, when we first get comments from people, they make story. If they, if they have a reasonable additional evidence that we can investigate, we probably wouldn't even take it forward to a hearing if we can just hear them out and, and have that be an investigation. Because even on a criminal matter, if you give me evidence that shows you were innocent, I'm not going to ignore that just to go to a hearing either. And so we'll take steps to be reasonable. But at the same point, we would just like the behavior to stop for the good of the whole community.
Getting back to the, the original cumulative fine that they would get, we would have the ability to say, okay, you got, you've accumulated $200,000 worth of fines. They could appeal it to us, and we could say, all right, well, comes to some reasonable, as, as long as they were showing that they were remorseful, and they were. If I looked at that and I said, hey, you know, you're really showing genuine remorse, and, and you have this fine, I would be inclined to think that maybe we might decide to say, okay, instead of 200,000, you got to pay 10,000.
Yeah, council certainly has that authority at an appeal level. The hearing officer would also have that authority. And as these are fines and not fees, as fines, we have a lot more flexibility to be able to apply some of that reasonableness even before it gets in front of a hearing officer.
Just in a, in a worst-case scenario, they could appeal it to council, and we could all decide.
Yep.
Does, does the Nala map not work for us?
We're using the See, Click, Fix app. The Nala map, we had, we tested and evaluated that. Our See, Click, Fix app that we're currently utilizing, the backend on that talks directly to our CAD system. So with the Nala map, somebody has to physically take the information, reinput it into the system. So on the backend, it's not as cost-effective for staff time to be able to do that. I understand we're looking to try to increase the, the user interface on See, Click, Fix and make that a more seamless experience. I know some people do like the Nala map and the way it works there. While we tested and evaluated it for our, our purposes, the system crashed a couple of times, and the backend was very clunky to be able to do that. And, and what it, what it did from a data entry standpoint is it doubled the efforts of our, the time effort of our staff, who, for the, the two nights that Mr. Shelton's talking about, are also very busy, public safety nights, criminal nights, DUI nights, and things like that too. So what we're trying to do is partner with the community and be as effective as we can here without duplicating efforts.
So See, Click, Fix is, is, goes right to the police car? The dispatcher, I mean?
It goes into the computer system. It generates, it can generate its own call for service, yeah.
How long does that take? I know if I, if I dial the non-emergency number.
So during, during, during our major, during our major illegal firework nights, like Fourth of July and New Year's, that's turned on to go pretty, pretty quickly. And they're going to, in a matter of a minute or some, something like that for those, those, when those buttons are activated. Our normal See, Click, Fix app can submit those reports. But on firework detail nights, on those things, we, we keep a closer eye on that and have it just pushed in directly. Because it, it does have to have an approval. It just doesn't have to have reentry of all the data into the system.
Because the, New Year's Eve, when you look at the police logs, there were several calls about one particular residence. And, and the answer for each of those calls was nothing seen. And then 10 minutes later, there's another report, and apparently, an officer responded, nothing seen. And I don't understand how you can have five or six people different calling about a house over a period of an hour and nothing seen. So I just, I kind of don't think our enforcement is there yet. So it's nice to have an ordinance, but I think the key is enforcing.
Well, we are working to try to leverage some of our professional staff assets, our technology assets, to be able to improve those enforcements. Frankly, a firework goes up, it explodes, and then nothing is seen until the next one goes up. And so there is some challenges there. And part of that has been working with our community through those apps to do the citizen attestation, where if our community member saw it, they can submit charges just based on their own observations without the requirement of the officer to see it themselves. So we're working on a number of those, a number of those tactics to be able to, to impact that.
You want to comment on citizen attestation? Citizen attestation, do you, a lot of people are afraid to report their neighbor for fear of retaliation. So it's, it's, we shouldn't rely on that.
We're not relying on it. We're trying to have a component of collaboration there as well, because our, our officers can't be everywhere all the time. We're looking, we're working hard to try to add additional staffing on those nights. We're using professional staff assets with code enforcement and animal control, much like Mr. Shelton was talking about. We are checking the efficacy of the drone program to be able to, to do some of that ourselves too. But I agree with you. I didn't think anybody would call in. And just on a night with limited education, we had 17 people that decided that they would be a part of it. City of Woodland had the same feelings, and they had 30 or 40 people on their first night that did, did step forward and be witnesses. So I understand somebody being apprehensive about it. But there is also a significant portion of our community who will, are willing to partner with law enforcement and be fed up and safeguard their residents as well.
So, so I don't know where I read this. Maybe I read it that it, and assessing that this happened isn't enough. You need a video. Is that the case?
Not necessarily. But when we have, when we go through the due diligence parts of, of evidence, a video is super helpful. Just like right now, you know, an officer can go in court and talk about what they saw. But if they have a body worn camera footage that shows it, it's just that more, it's more effective evidence, right? So we like as much evidence as we possibly can whenever we can get it. But it doesn't mean we'll shut it down just because a person there. I mean, as a citizen, you have a right, and you're assumed to be honest unless there's evidence to show otherwise. When you make those reports, you have that power as a citizen to be able to do that in the system.
I'm not thrilled to make myself a target by holding up a video camera. That's all I'm saying.
Does, does the drone have camera capabilities?
Yes, ma'am.
Holding up a phone.
Any other questions or comments? Comments, questions? Nope. Okay, then we need a vote.
I move approval. Move, staff recommends, the city council move to introduce a reading, reading by title and waive a full reading by ordinance 2025, amending Citrus Heights Municipal Code, Chapter 38, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 3, Fireworks, Section 38-78 and 38-81.
Second.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Chief. Next item, please.
Next item is item 11. The subject is Arts and Cultural City Council Ad Hoc Two-by-Two Committee. And at the March 12th city council meeting, the city council received a presentation on proposed arts and culture programming to further support arts and culture in Citrus Heights. And as part of that discussion, the city council discussed creating a city council ad hoc two-by-two committee comprised of two council members. This would be added to the annual appointments listing, which the mayor makes in January of each year. We would just add this to that list, and then each year, the council would consider the appointment to that two-by-two committee until such time that the council feels that it's no longer necessary. But tonight, the recommendation is that the mayor make those appointments, and then the city council take action to ratify those appointments.
Well, for sure, Councilmember Nelson is like anting in her chair. So I know she wants to go on there. And I was thinking of Portia. Okay, yes, Councilmember Middleton and Councilmember Nelson. Next item, please.
Do we need a vote on that?
Yes, this would need to be ratified by the city council. So if we could ask for a vote.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, is there an emotion we can read?
Was there a motion by, was that taking the mayor's motion? And was there a second to appoint those two?
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we establish a arts committee, and we appoint Councilmember Middleton and Councilmember Nelson as the designated committee. How's that?
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So the next item, item number 12, is discussion concerning city council stipends for service on various regional boards and commissions. And at the March 12th city council meeting, during items requested by council members, two council members requested that a discussion item be brought back to discuss stipends that the council members receive. In addition to their services, council members, they also serve on various regional boards. And several of those regional boards provide a stipend to city council members for their service on those boards, some of which are established by statute, others are established by either bylaws or rules of the board. And in April of 2024, the city council considered amending the city council's salary pursuant to changes related to SB 329 that raised the maximum limit for city council compensation. And at that time, the city council took action to raise the city council's compensation to the maximum of 1,900 per month. And the ordinance became operative after the November 2024 election, when we had new council members elected. And so based on the California statute, council members may not personally accept compensation from other boards that is not established by statute. So some of those boards, which are the Sacramento, Sacramento Cable Commission and the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, those two boards, their stipends are not established by a separate statute. And therefore, the council would not be able to accept the compensation above the 1,900 for those two boards. So there's two options, and I'll put the recommendations up here on the screen for the city council to view. But staff's recommendation is to either request that the Metro Cable Commission and the Sacramento Area Council of Governments forward those stipends to the city to deposit into the city's general fund. The other option for council's consideration is to consider whether all stipends for all of the, for the regional boards that do provide a stipend, whether or not those be forwarded to the city to deposit into the general fund. And so if you have any questions, I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Anybody have questions? Questions? Questions?
So, so prior to the, the, us voting for, to raise the stipend from the city, prior to that, the, the statutes weren't, the, the statutes, are they recent from November? Those statutes were put in place so that the stipends from the various boards cannot be considered as compensation to a council member. Is that the case? That's a recent November?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So what we're, what we're voting, just so I'm clear, so what we're voting for is either you leave the, the ones in place that aren't specifically named, like SACOG and like the Metro, Metropolitan Cable, or you wipe out all of them, and all of them go to the city.
I don't think that's quite what we're saying. I think those two, SACOG and the Cable Commission, didn't, by statute, doesn't have a specific amount. So that, they, you can still accept the stipend, but it's going to come to the city general fund.
Okay.
All the other ones will, will remain in effect, and you can, you individually can accept those in addition to the stipend you're getting for your council seat. The second option is anything you're supposed to get above what you get here, you just, it goes straight to the general fund. You could think of another option if you'd like, but those are the two that made the most sense to staff.
Okay.
I will say I disagreed with the legal interpretation. I think, I read the statute, is that all, anything we make outside of the city is added to the $1,900 maximum. And so even my $100 sewer goes towards that maximum. So my fear was that at some point, someone's going to say, Dana, pay it back. And I'm going to have to write a big check, you know, to get it back. So I did send a request to FPPC, but it's, you know, one of those, I'll get to you when I get to you type things. So I have not heard back from them. But I'm inclined to go with the second one and just have all of our stipends sent back to the city general fund. The city of Sacramento does that. They'll put five people on a board, and they always announce at the beginning of the meeting that city of Sacramento is paid through, you know, an agreement with the county, and the other cities get their $100 stipends. They always announce that at the beginning of the meeting. So I, and, and poor STA doesn't pay anything. So I mean, it's not like we all get. And then I think there was another one that gets nothing. So it's, I'm, I'm for the.
Library doesn't get anything.
Library doesn't get anything?
I think it's, it's, we're all doing the same work, and we're going to be, over our term of our elected office, sharing. We might be, you know, sharing boards and moving. moving around, but I think the most fair thing to do, because we're all getting the same amount of stipend here to serve the folks, is to put that money back into the general fund.
All of it.
All of it.
I agree. Anybody disagree on that?
No.
You don't have anything to put back.
So do we, so what we've collected so far, we need to refund that?
Only for, only for those two, I would say. I think your policy is effective tonight. So going forward, all the funds are going to go to the city general fund. However, for those two, I don't think you got a legal right to get it. For Secog and for the, I keep forgetting, but the Cable Commission.
That's going back to November?
Just going back to November, correct.
Okay.
You could either give that to the general fund or you could, yeah.
Work it out.
Work it out. We could work that out afterward.
Yeah, somebody just tell me what I gotta pay.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Okay. So I think we have the direction from-
And then you'll notify, you'll notify the county that they'll, they, because they asked me to fill out, you know, a direct deposit form to my bank and I haven't given it to them, so.
Yeah, based on what I'm hearing from the city council, you wish to go with the second option to have all future stipends from the, all of the regional boards that do provide a stipend to be forwarded to the city to deposit it to the general fund. So we will move forward with contacting those boards to request that be done.
Do they still take out taxes and everything? Since we're not getting it, we're not paying tax on it. It should just be flat, it should just be a flat hundred dollars, not ninety-one, thirty-five, right?
Yeah, we'll work with each of the regional boards on that.
Okay.
Okay.
So let's have a motion.
I move that we take all future stipends from various regional boards and commissions and have them forwarded to the city, the city for the deposit into the general fund.
I'll second.
Motion made by Councilmember Milton, seconded by Councilmember Nelson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
The next item is item number thirteen. The subject is Approval of City Manager Employment Agreement Amendment, and the recommendation is for council to consider a resolution approving an amendment to the employment agreement between city manager Ashley Feeney and the city of Citrus Heights.
Anybody have comments, questions?
Mm-hmm.
Motion?
Madam Mayor, I am required by law to make an oral announcement about the contract terms.
Would you please make your announcement?
I'm happy to do it. I'm happy to do it. The, the staff report really lays out what it is. City Manager Feeney has been here for over three years and his contract did not have any built-in increases or COLAs or anything in that nature. And after a couple performance evaluations, including the completion of a recent one, the council is looking to consider an amendment to, to the contract. And looking at his contract compared to others in the region, he is at, at the bottom in terms of base salary. This would put him towards the middle of the bottom. And in considering him being a Peppera versus a Pers employee, that's also a cost saving in terms of retirement costs to the city. But the proposed amendment before the, the council would be to adjust the base salary to twenty-four thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars monthly, a car allowance of five hundred dollars per month, a COLA consistent with unrepresented employees. The contract would be an at-will contract that's ongoing unless terminated by either party. I'm happy to answer any questions. That's my report.
Okay. So do we have a motion? Or do we, we just move to?
Move to amend the contract.
So, and I know this is a, so I would like to move that we amend the contract.
Is it an amendment or it's an all-new contract?
No, it's an amendment.
It's an amendment, okay.
Amend the contract effective May first.
Second. Ryan, you're looking as weird.
Yeah, I have a question.
Well, the only, the only, what I had drafted was, it was effective today.
Oh.
So April ninth.
Tim, can you amend that?
I'm good with that, whatever.
Okay, second.
It just seems weird that it's right in the middle of the month, that's all. Anyway, it's okay.
When it wants, when it's approved or signed, you know.
Yeah. We don't have to do the math, so I'm not worried.
All right. So amend as stated, because I didn't see the, I just wasn't sure when the effective date.
It'd be effective today.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Move, move approval.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we're done. Got it. Next item, please.
Next item is Department Reports, number fourteen. The subject is Police Department Annual Report.
Keeping you busy.
Good evening again, Mayor, members of council. Alex Turcot, your Chief of Police, and I have the honor of telling you a little bit about all the great stuff the police department's been doing over the last year. This report will cover our annual report for twenty twenty-four, so calendar year twenty twenty-four, and we'll get started. First off, I would just like to start with a couple thank yous. So one of the best things we have going for us is the community that we serve, right? For the police department, that's a major draw here. Unlike some of my partners in the same, the same profession, our community really does have a strong support for law and order, strong support for police, and strong community pride to make sure that things are better than they were yesterday. So it does lead to a very, very nice place to work. Now, our city does have more people per square foot than any other city in our county. That can always lead, whenever people are on top of each other, it does lead to a busier city per capita. But the community pride that we have here in the city and the support of the police department is huge. And then with that, members of council, you've always been very supportive in the endeavors to make sure that we keep, while being fiscally responsible, keep that performance excellence going and try to serve the community in the best way that we can. Also, city manager Feeney, definitely appreciate your support, sir, and my city director fellows. Our team is one big team here at the city, and so the police department gives of service to other jurisdictions or to other departments in the city. And we've seen a lot of good partnership through general services, planning, econ development, or whatever. So it really is a nice one-team vibe. Talking about our organization in general, one of my favorite things about giving this report today is over the last three years, I've had to start with a buzzkill of post-COVID staffing woes and how understaffed we were coming out and trying to fix that. Happy to report, we're almost fully staffed. We're back to where we normally were and allotted. In fact, as of last Monday, all but one position over at the police department had an applicant in process behind it. We've shared with you before, there are some operational vacancies because it does take longer to create an officer from the start than to have a lateral. So we do see some of that still, but we have, we're back at full staff. For a good portion of twenty twenty-four, we've had more robust staffing. You'll see some of the statistics that we'll talk about tonight really reflect how much can be done when our staffing levels are higher. And so I'm very proud to be able to report that. I'll also tell you, it's a, it's a joy to have the opportunity to rebuild this department. The department was founded in two thousand and six and they got to hand pick experts from around the whole state that were community police-minded, service-oriented, folks of good character, that were willing to do hard work. I had the opportunity to hand pick those same folks. So from an experience level, our experience level has gone down a little bit because we've had a lot more entry-level folks, because that's what the job market looks like. But the passion, the character, the energy of the line staff that we've been able to bring onboard cannot be, cannot be touched, I think, in the region. We have some of the finest, most passionate about community service, men and women in our, in our profession, and I'm super proud of all of them. Moving up from the line level, our leadership team, it's my expectation that our leadership team create an environment of performance, but one that's balanced with the well-being of staff, a supportive environment, a responsive internal environment. So the same expectations we have of customer service out into the community, we want our line staff to feel that from our leadership team. And I'm proud to say, our leadership team steps up to that every day consistently. With younger staff, our supervisors are way more hands-on than they might have been in the past. They're making sure these folks have proper mission, that they're being deployed effectively, that they're being mentored and properly trained as they come up. And it's just a joy to see the energy there, the passion that's there, and just the, the character of the people that we have is just phenomenal. So I know many of you have been on a ride-along yourselves, but for anybody in the community that can pass a basic background check, would encourage you to come out on a ride-along and really just witness some of these folks going from some of the most tragic calls you would never wish on anybody, and immediately turn around to be a marriage and family counselor, or a guidance counselor, or a mentor to an at-risk youth. It's just phenomenal, the character we have in these folks, that, that comes from the hiring, but promoting the right people, and the expectation of our leadership team where they stay engaged. They, you know, they, they demand high performance, but they give good support and wellness, and then they hold folks accountable to doing what's right out there. And the number one issue is trying to protect life, preserve property, and enhance the vibrancy and quality of life in the community, and they do that every single day. I'd also be remiss not to specifically talk about some of our superstars that don't get as much credit as they deserve. But for our, over at the PD, our executive team is myself and our two commanders. So Commander Chris Frye, who's here today, and Commander Mike Wells, both help me run, run the police department. Commander Wells does patrol and dispatch, so both are your field services that you'll engage with. Commander Frye does special services, so code enforcement, animal control, our detectives, our impact team, our traffic team, our records unit, all come out of, at his leadership. So just special thank you, Commander Frye, and for Commander Wells, who's joining us virtually tonight. Couldn't have done it without you. And last, senior management analyst Cassandra Canaan, who's here in the crowd, really took all of the stuff that's been going on over the year, worked with leadership team, to distill this down into a editable topic so that we're not here till midnight talking about all the sources that we have. So we have a lot of information to get through. I promise not every slide will take as long as it, as I have been taking on the slide number one, but I just wanted to get out of the way how happy I am with the department and what a good team you guys have. With those new hires, we have a lot of new promotions as well. So these were the leadership promotions that happened over twenty twenty-four. We've already in twenty twenty-five had some additional ones and we'll celebrate those in the next annual report. But just kind of walking through the line here, Commander Mike Wells was promoted June second, Police Lieutenant Joe Aguilar also on June second, Police Lieutenant William Dunning, who's now our POP lieutenant, Police Sergeant Joe Keller, Police Sergeant Ken Spencer, and Communication Supervisor Sarah Friedrich, who is here tonight presenting to you. So congratulations to all those folks, and they've been doing an awesome job. All right, last year, we talked a little bit about what we were going to try to accomplish in twenty twenty-four. And so see, these are some of the topics we discussed last year, which were continued focus on the CARES campaign, a real focus on illegal drug possession and intoxication enforcement, revitalizing and enhancing our Crime and Traffic Strategic Enforcement Program, known as CATCH, some animal service enhancements, community engagement enhancements, and youth safety and engagement. And we'll step through each one of these here today. On the quality of life enforcement position there, we had Impact that was doing a dual role until recently. Happy to say our POP team is back as of January in twenty twenty-five, and we'll be looking to make that even more robust. We'll highlight that next year to talk about all the success that they have. But in really laying the groundwork for that, two Impact detectives were dedicated to quality of life, blight abatement, nuisance abatement, and working alongside our beautification crew during the last year. That really set the pathway for those detectives to kind of be the founding members of our new POP unit, and so we're looking forward to success there as well. Some of those efforts resulted in a six hundred and sixty-eight percent increase, which is an additional one thousand and twenty-nine citations for those quality of life issues, which camping, trespassing, loitering, panhandling, illegal shopping carts, and a whole host of others. They also were able to identify, they're also able to get prosecution referrals for sixteen chronic nuisance offenders as well. And that list of chronic nuisance offenders has grown, I think I shared with council at strategic planning session, to a significant, to a significant amount. We're working on identifying those folks that are the biggest drains on our resources and on our, on the safety of our public, and trying to utilize all the aspects at our disposal to get them prosecuted. Our code enforcement rental housing unit also increased their proactive efforts within the commercial corridors. This is calendar year twenty twenty-four. They had a hundred and twenty-seven, a hundred and twenty-seven percent increase in officer-initiated calls for service or proactive enforcement, which was an additional six hundred and seventy-eight cases. There was a ninety-two percent increase in massage establishment checks, which was an additional twenty-three. As far as illegal drug possession intoxication enforcement, you know, focusing on quality of life issues with the city, we resulted in a seventy-seven percent increase, which is initial seven hundred and forty-seven, seven hundred and forty-six crimes against society. That's kind of the overall category for drug violations, weapon violations and such. And we'll go, we'll go deeper into that in a later point here, but drug violations were increased over eighty-three percent in twenty, over what they were in twenty twenty-three. Revitalizing our CATCH program, as part of our grant funding, we're able to bring a software system online known as Peregrine. And what that did was take some of the disparate data systems and be able to put it into a usable format. So in the past, in order to get the data mining done, to then turn around and form our crime strategies, it took a significant portion of our one crime analyst's time just to prepare reports, and then analysis was after that. Now with the software system, any member of my command staff can grab the same data at once, start making those strategy plans and ideas, and then the crime analyst has more time to actually come alongside our investigators, our impact team, and our command staff to actually drill down on analysis and find offenders and find patterns. So that's been very helpful. Animal services enhancements, as you're all well aware, we entered into a services agreement with Bradshaw to provide animal sheltering and including their call center. That gave us access to some of Bradshaw's vaccine and microchipping events to support and add to our own, low-cost spay and neutering services, and an onsite pest hospital for the sheltered animals, which is down at the Bradshaw facility, and all included in the contract costs. Any engagement enhancements, you can see, and I won't read them all here, but we're out in the community all the time trying to make life just a little bit better. Our PAL unit, our PAL nonprofit is a big piece of that. We have our newest PAL coordinator that we've introduced to council before. They've been organizing many of these events alongside our staff, just attending out, being out with the community and increasing that, that engagement there. For youth safety, not only with the PAL community enhancement, but also, you know, there was a lot of discussion around school safety and the like. Our traffic team took that on as their major community policing focus, to focus around the schools, become that liaison point of contact for staff at the schools, and then be in a, be in a close response availability to be able to go to any, any emergencies that happen there. One of the main complaints of our school systems was traffic congestion at pickup and drop-off, traffic violators, et cetera. Happy to say that our traffic team, and we'll talk a little bit more about them later, but just in this school effort, they had a significant increase of over a hundred and nineteen additional traffic citations in around schools. They also applied some traffic calming measures to some of the schools and helped them with their traffic flow and pattern, so it was less impactful on the traffic in the streets and an easier time for parents to pick up. All right, moving forward to the department's statistics. So as you all have remembered, we've transitioned now completely to the incident-based system that's required by the federal government. So this is a, a high-level look at some of those here. They break these down into really three major groups, which is crimes against persons, crimes against property, and crimes against society. Our crimes against persons rate, you'll see here, there was an increase of six point six eight percent, and I'll talk a little bit about a major causal factor in that here in a second. Crimes against property, there's a decrease of one percent. That's fairly positive, though, because our efforts around retail theft did see a lot more reporting happening in the early, at the later parts of twenty twenty-three and early twenty twenty-four. So to be able to decrease overall property crime at all was a significant effort, and we're looking forward to seeing that number grow in the next year here. Crimes against society, which is the biggest increase that we talked about, is that seventy-seven percent increase there. Now, that unfortunately puts our total at a fifteen percent increase in crime, but I want to, I want to justify that in some context, that we asked our officers and our staff to be more proactive, go after the root causes of these issues. They increased their amount of proactivity in arrests by over sixty-eight percent. The crimes against society category is basically mostly contains proactive efforts. So it's narcotic violations that our officers will have from proactive contacts, weapons violations of prohibited persons that they contact on traffic stops and pedestrian stops, and other paraphernalia and dish, like for the people that have needles and pipes and things like that on them as well. So all that, to an, to the, without context, that looks like a huge spike in crime. It's actually a very positive outlook from the proactive efforts that we put in there. Talking about this increase in crimes for persons, anytime we see an increase, we try to dive in and analyze what the trend line is there, what's causing that issue. Many times with crimes against persons, there's not a lot we can do about assaults, especially domestic violence assaults or things like that, other than education. On this particular one, an interesting trend is, a major trend for crimes against persons was actually assaults on our officers. And so, you know, unintended consequences of increased proactivity is as you're catching more bad actors doing bad things, more of them choose to resist, more of them choose to assault our officers. Now, what I'm happy to report about that is we did not see a significant increase in injuries to officers or injuries to suspects. So the training that we talk about, the de-escalation that we talk about- So the training that we talk about, the de-escalation that we talk about, the use of technology to try to create distance, while it is not always 100% effective, has shown that even with this increase on officer assaults, we haven't seen that, that damage increase to our staff or to our suspects. So pretty happy to report on that. Couple other highlights from trends that we noticed there. Animal cruelty is up a little bit, well up significantly there. When we look into that trend, that's actually a positive of some education efforts and streamlining some of our investigative systems to be able to get to more of these calls quicker and to have not only our animal control staff, but they've trained our officers as well to recognize animal cruelty that maybe have, might have been ignored in the past. And so while we don't like to see an increase in any, any kind of animal cruelty, this one here is actually positive from an education and enforcement standpoint, we're seeing that. And there's several, several things we'll talk about tonight where there are significant increases that are actually positive in the efficiencies that they're being able to do. As you can see, weapon violations were up over 47% and then drug-related offenses were up over 83%. I do want to again say that we're not seeing a dramatic surge in narcotics out in the community. We have now with fuller staff and are probably be able to be more proactive, we're able to interdict these things a little bit more than we were able to when we were on our, our bare staffing minimum. So I'm very happy to see those things. All right, our traffic, our traffic unit, here's some of the highlights from our traffic officers, you know, citations are up, DUI arrests are up. I talked a little bit about schools earlier, but I just wanted to point out here, a breakdown from our traffic liaison program. We have one motor assigned to each high school. You can see the increase that that's resulted in and some of the traffic, proactive traffic enforcement efforts. And then we've asked the rest of our team to focus on all schools and just make sure that they're trying to impact during those busy areas, and they've seen a significant increase in there as well. Overall citations around the schools are up 66% as compared to 2023. This is kind of a highlight of all, a lot of our, our categories here, so you can see our calls for service are up a little bit. Our officer-initiated activity or our proactive efforts up significantly. Camp calls remain a steady, a steady issue, legal camp calls. Quality of life calls, which would be a lot of those blight calls we talked about before, panhandling, nuisance activity and the like, you can see a little increase in there. Weapons seized, missing persons located, that is a direct reflection of being able to get a dedicated missing persons detective back into that unit and add personnel to that. We have Detective Jackson's been doing an awesome job in there, streamlining some of that stuff, finding our missing persons and also preventing missing persons. He's worked with some of our group homes and dramatically decreased the amount of calls for service that staff have had for AWOL youth going outside. So it's been very positive. More reports, that's the same with stolen vehicles, misdemeanor arrests are significantly up and felony arrests are also up. This is a highlight on our general investigations unit. I won't read all of this here, just want to say that, you know, as we were going through our staffing issue, we really focused on making sure our emergency response, the backbone of patrol was there. We never shut down our detectives, but they definitely were less staffed than they were as the staffings come back, coupled with some of part-time extra help that we've been able to give to them. We've seen a, we've seen a significant increase in the amount of cases that they've been able to handle, that they've been able to sign out and that they've been able to bring to fruition. They've, they've been able to solve a number of significant cases, including the JCPenney burglary series, they've been working with the ORT as well. Now, one thing I do want to point out here, because it looks very scary on, on the slide here, is this increase in child pornography. So we have a detective that's assigned to our local task force here, there's a countywide task force focused on this. This is one of those areas where education and reporting has actually been very helpful because from what they're seeing, the, the tips that they're getting from the community for people that recognize behavior that's consistent with some of these issues have skyrocketed, they've been able to get more tips and leads from the community, they've been able to make significant arrests in this area. And this is one I think we can all agree is a primary focus that we want to make sure we're not endangering our, our children out there. So they've been doing a really great job with that as well. Our IMPACT detectives, this was last year, so this is when IMPACT had the dual mission of kind of what was now the POP unit and, and, and their normal special investigations role. They also have the USPS Task Force Detective is assigned there as well. They've put a lot of good numbers here on the board. You can see there's, there's the, the canine for our postal service and she's responsible for bringing in about $650,000 of illegal currency that was gained from drug transactions, seize 10 firearms, three kilos of cocaine, and you see the list that goes there as well. On the right side, you'll see kind of a breakdown. The CARES program-related activity, that's that quality of life and blight issues that our POP team will primarily focus moving forward. But you can see they made significant, significant impact, if you will, in all those areas. So very, very good for them. Our dispatch center, we had the opportunity to recognize our professionals tonight. Here's some of the, just the statistics from that call. You can see that 911 calls, they handle about almost 100 911 calls a day, and those are the real emergency calls that, that come in where, where immediate response is necessary. It's about 35,000 a year. The industry standard and recommendation for a 911 call center is that all 911 calls should be answered, well, actually 90% of all 911 calls should be answered within 15 seconds. Our dispatch center answers 97% of all calls in 15 seconds. That might not sound like a big deal, but any second saved on an emergency call is helpful for the community. And so they do an excellent job with their service model there. Some other highlights from dispatch, and you might have remembered us coming in front of council for a lot of these things. Our community center, our communications center remodel, that's been a long project and we're, we're about to put a shovel in the dirt on that, if you will, here in May. So we'll be moving our dispatch folks out of their communication center into a temporary backup center that we've, we've built for them, though it's all being completed under ARPA funding and it will significantly enhance the abilities and the technology in the communication center when they're able to move back in. Another thing there is the backup radio system replacements. You know, we had aging equipment and we're looking to, to up the efficacy of those equipments and, and some of those areas there. Representative Omni Bear was able to give us some appropriation funds to get our backup consoles and our battery powers working, and those are some very expensive items that we were able to, to utilize through grant funding, which was great. And then our ORT grant played for the video wall and we discussed that last time too, but that's, all those tools will have a very highly effective communication center upgrade here by the end of the summer, hopefully, so. Code enforcement rental housing, here's some of the increases that they've been able to, to get this year and as part of strategic planning over the next year, we're going to be really diving into the efficacy of their processes, trying to utilize technology to really maximize each position that's in there to try to see that, you know, we can increase, what we're looking to do in this next year is really decrease the time from the problem coming in the door to the problem being abated as much as possible and give them the tools necessary to do that. But you can see even under their current standards, they've been bringing properties into compliance at a much better rate in 2024 and some of the other issues here. Their, their total incidents are up over 41%. Proactivity is up over 127%. That is definitely a significant community concern, especially as we're trying to increase the vibrancy of the town, is make sure that we're being proactive in these efforts, especially the highly visible commercial corridors. So they've been focused on that as well, right in line in partnership with our planning department and our economic development department to use specific scalpel approaches to try to get some of those worst offenders taken care of and abated. See our rental and housing unit as well, there's, these are the top five code violations that end up getting called in and that they deal with, so trash and debris, neglected vehicles, neglected landscape, zoning complaints, and again, unoperable vehicles. All right. Animal services unit, so here's some of their, their stats here as well. Some good increases in a lot of those areas, we're working to continue to enhance some of that, bringing the Bradshaw implementation program online, took a little bit, we're about 99.9% fully implemented. There's a couple other things we're working through, but we should be looking forward to that. We have some other items that we're working on as well for service enhancement for the public facing part of that and just looking to increase that, that as well, so. Our records and, records and data compliance, and if there was ever a unit that does not get their just desserts because it sounds like such a boring job, these are the keepers of the keys to the criminal justice system. So there's nothing that we could accomplish in the criminal justice system if it wasn't for our records and data compliance people making sure all the boxes are checked, all the unfended legislative mandates are met and that these cases are packaged up in a way that their district attorney can utilize them, our, our public access to records is there and those things. You can see some of the work that they do. Not only do they do our records and compliance and drive that heart of criminal justice, they also are the face of the department when you come into the, the front lobby and they do, they do care for our customer service there at the front. And our volunteer group, and this, these are the most cost-effective employees that we have as, or members of our department. They, they provide wonderful service, they're, they're dispersed throughout our, our units there. Some of the interesting pieces where you'll see them most visibly is we have traffic volunteers who go out, help abate some of our vehicles out there. We have drone pilots who are volunteers. In fact, one of our volunteer, one of our volunteers is kind of the, the main hub of getting our FAA approvals and keeping us up to date and training some of our officers and other staff in how to be pilots. And they're out there in the community with us all the time and their volunteer service hours, you can see there are significantly, well, they're worth every dollar and I, I offer to give them a raise almost every day, so do a good job. Our social media campaign, you know, we try to just keep the community informed, we're in all of our public meetings that we can be at, we're at our neighborhood area meetings with our command staff folks, and then there is the environment of the social media realm. And so we do make sure that we're informing our, our, our community as much as possible. You can see some of the, the outreach here, so our Facebook is probably the most active with this particular community. We have about 18,900 followers, which are the people that push the button to choose to follow, but we've actually seen our reach of about 298,000 different people who have engaged with the platform over the, over the time. So some of our more popular posts, you can see below, we'll actually reach outside of Citrus Heights too, for just folks that are interested in law enforcement as well. And Instagram dovetails in with, with Facebook there, it's more of a picture-based option and you guys are well aware. We utilize YouTube, Nextdoor and X, formerly Twitter, and we use Twitter for mostly the in, the traffic congestion ideas or if we have a critical incident to put quick information out on that as well, so you can see some of the followers there. And this is handled through collateral duties spread throughout the department. So we ask for our line-level folks to forward content up. We have several command staff members that do our Facebook posts for us in line with their other duties as well. And Commander Wells has kind of been our, our go-to social media person for the last year or so. All right, looking forward to the future. So in 2026, I'll be telling you all the great stuff we've accomplished in this space. And so again, you know, looking to, to review and evaluate technology, and we have our, we have our ORT grant that allowed us to evaluate a lot of different technology aspects. What we'll be doing in this year is really crunching that down to see what the proper return of investment is for the community and evaluate the right mix of technology to be a force multiplier for our staff and make sure we're fiscally responsible in that operation as well. Our property crime, you know, has gone, our property crime although down slightly this year, we do want to continue focusing on that. And one of the concerns as, as we've paced, as we've placed a lot of technology and pressure into some of our bigger commercial areas, we want to make sure that the tributary residential streets don't become victims either. And so we're truly trying to look at a balanced approach to ensuring that our neighborhood streets get some proactive enforcement as it relates to property crimes as well. Going to continue our focus on chronic nuisance offenders and accountability measures, we're evaluating different items with that. One of them's a community prosecutor program that we're looking to evaluate to see if that'll work here in our town. We've been working with the city attorney's office on our chronic nuisance offenders as well, and we're seeing some good success in there. As you see, 16 chronic nuisance offenders were prosecuted last year and that's been, that's been pretty helpful. I'm sorry, referred for prosecution, they're still in the court process on, on, on many of those, but at least three have been convicted and removed from our community from, during last year, so it's been great. I talked about this earlier, but we're looking to streamline some of the processes and programs and code enforcement so that their proactive work out there can be better seen in the, in the community. One of those things is looking at how to communicate out, much like CCLICX does for blight, how to communicate out what code's working on and where they're at and what they're doing, so that they can create a feedback loop for our neighbors, right? If you complain about a setback or a zoning issue, there's not a lot of visible work being done until it's complied, complied with. So we're trying to look on some of that communications balance as well as the process and technology on the backend to make it easier to get from problem to abatement. And then animal services is going to be pushing hard for pet licensing and shipping because we would really like to see our return to owner numbers go up and get our pets back to folks before they have to go down to the shelter. It's better for the pet, it's better for the community, and we're really going to make a, a significant push on that as well. And also, although some of these occurred in 2025, I did want to pause and just in remembrance of the team members that we lost during this last season. Obviously, everyone remembers Ruben and, you know, the tragic loss that we suffered in September with losing Ruben. He was really a light in the animal services world and a true professional and obviously he'll, he'll be missed. Just recently here at the end of the last month, we lost our volunteer Carla Clark. She was a volunteer with our code enforcement unit, very sweet lady. Her sister is also kind of a surrogate department member and we're looking to see if she might, she might come over to volunteer, but a genuine loss here recently. And then Axel, Axel is actually a Medal of Valor Award recipient, one of our canines. He was retired, living the good life with his, his handler, and he passed in February. And so his name will be added to the K9 memorial in the front of the police department here.
How old was Axel?
I do not remember off the top, but I know, I'll look to my team here. I want to say seven or eight, but I'm not sure.
That's all?
Yeah, he had a, he had a health issue that came up there at the end, out of all of a sudden on us, so. All right, and with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions or, or comments.
Questions or comments? Councilmember Shaefer.
So Chief, in your report, you, you did, issued 568 gaming permits. What does that mean? What's that, for what?
So mostly for the casino, so every, every dealer or employee that handles gaming at the casino needs to have a license.
Is that like, oh, so, so that's for licensing for like the dealers?
Yeah, so they pay a fee and they have to do a background check and we process.
How many dealers do they have over there, do you know?
I imagine if it's hard for me to retain the 148 people we have constantly, there's, they have a lot of staff there.
They have a bit of turnover.
There's a significant, there's a significant churn and a need for more licenses.
And what does a permit cost for a dealer?
You know, I, I don't know off the top of my head, I know it's on our fee schedule, but I don't, I don't have it in front of me.
That's it?
Okay.
Anybody else have questions or comments? Just a sense of report.
Thank you.
I have a comment that the numbers seem wild. It's like, this seems like a, a little city when I drive through it and to see the numbers here are shocking that we have that many calls, basically one call per person that we have in the city every year. But it's because of the hard work that you all do, you know, that you keep it essentially a secret from our everyday person that's driving through the city. So it, seeing the numbers reinforces the hard work that you all do all the time, you know, that we don't see, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
It's hard to believe we still have 350 some people DUIs. It, it's just, and that's how, that's how many you caught. You know, those aren't the ones that scooted by, didn't get caught.
Yeah, you know, and I think there's, I think with our partners at MAD as well, you know, we've made some efforts to, with education, but that's one of those things where every DUI taken off the road is preventing a homicide in some way, it's saving a life. And so we do have, take time to honor the officers that are able to, to, to do high levels in that work, but Uber's available. This is, shouldn't be this hard of a thing to do, right?
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Who knows who got saved that night, you know?
Yeah.
You guys do a lot of work. All right, well, it's the team, the A-team.
All right, well, thank you.
I think we have one more item.
Next item is city manager items.
You got 90 seconds. Let me get it.
I'm going to move very quickly. Thank you, Chief, for that thorough department update. City manager updates, Habitat for Humanity, it's been a very robust outpouring of interest on that, over 250 attendees. We've added another date due to that demand or Habitat has, and that'll be April 11th from Six State, the, the Citrus Heights Event Center. So that was, that's going to be just in a couple of days from now, so if you're interested, there's a link to learn more.
This isn't a picture of what?
Yeah, this is a picture from the other night on April 7th. It was, it was full.
Wow.
Yeah, over 250 attendees and, you know, it wasn't enough room for everybody, so we've, and we had to move it to community center. It was originally going to be held here, so we talked about getting the word out far and wide here in Citrus Heights and I think we accomplished that. Next slide, please. A couple of upcoming events, we have National Drug Takeback Day that our police department's going to be participating in, and that's Saturday, April 26 at 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at our Citrus Heights Police Department. So any unused drugs, we encourage residents to bring those down here for safe disposal. And then we also have, in honor of Earth Day, we have a Chip In Day volunteer event and this will also be held at the police department where we really kind of spruce things up, and that is from 8:30 to 12:30 on Tuesday, April 22nd. I know some of the councils participate in some of those events in the past along Stock Ranch and other areas. along Stock Ranch and other areas. Financial reports, we're going to have, our popular annual financial report will be published on our website tomorrow. And it'll be brought to city council at the April 23rd meeting as a consent item. But just wanted to highlight, before it gets published, that the financial statements, they're unmodified after being reviewed, meaning they're clean, there was no recommended changes to be made. No findings on the city's internal controls, meaning they feel that we have good, solid internal controls on our finances. And then our general fund balanced increased by $11.2 million over that fiscal year. We also had our audit and there were no findings on, this is an audit that's required for federal grant funds. So there were no findings, meaning that the report was clear on the $9.3 million in federal grant funds that, that we shepherd on behalf of the community. And then our Transportation Development Act audit, again, no findings on that for the $387,000 in, in TDA funds. So these will come back on consent. They will be published on the website tomorrow. Wanted to give you a heads up on that, as well as any members of the community that would like to take a look at those. And then the Gateway Activation Project, this is a community workshop. This is again continuation of our trails. This was a subject of discussion at the SRPD in city Citrus Heights two-by-twos. But it's a meeting that will be held at Big Oak Mobile Home Park on Tuesday, April 29th. And this is that Gateway Activation Trail Project that the council's been briefed on multiple times. So for members of the community that have interest, wanted to make sure that we are notifying you. And then again, our last slide, Big Day of Service is going to be held on Saturday, May 17th. Plugged this before, if you have interest, please take a look at our website and see how you can engage. This is the first time we've run it here in Citrus Heights. And that concludes my updates.
Thank you.
The next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Anybody have anything?
And there's no other items.